It is weird on here.
We're waiting on. Yeah, we're not on Zoom on the something happened. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town and Norfolk Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. It is 7:00 PM. We are here in Town Hall Meeting Room 124. We are also live on, livestreamed on YouTube and Zoom, and it is being recorded for everybody's future enjoyment. Members of the public are welcome to attend the in-person meeting here or by remote Zoom. Please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection, which we did have a couple weeks ago. Sorry for the delay. We just had to work through a few technical issues, so we're a little bit behind schedule, a few minutes late. So we'll do a quick go around the room of who's here for the planning board. So we'll just go around. Gary Searle is our associate member. We have Gary Sullivan, birthday boy. Happy birthday, Gary.
Happy birthday.
Chris Modford.
Okay.
Myself, Chad Pack, Eric Diamond, Melissa Mayo, our town planner, Rich McCarthy, and our admin assistant, Betsy Fajol. So we are here gathered, and we have a public hearing for 7:00 PM to discuss the proposed zoning bylaw amendments related to the accessory dwelling ADUs for the May 14th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting. I'd like to, do we need to make a motion to just open the meeting, or no? Just open it?
So.
Okay. So I'd like to open the meeting to discuss the ADUs. So, Rich, do you want to go through the highlights of the changes we made from our last public hearing?
Sure. Some grammatical punctuation things that were identified, which we changed. From the top of the page, there was a, the short-term rental, although I see that in capitalized T. So I suppose maybe we want to capitalize T. It says short lowercase t, and then capital R. I missed that one.
On which page?
First red section.
First red section?
Oh, yeah.
Short-term rental.
Yeah. That probably the change we should make. Capitalize T. There's a period there, and this is an accessory dwelling unit.
Mm-hmm.
Capitalizing the A in accessory because it is capitalized below. We inserted, if you recall, I did a word search, find to make sure that it says accessory dwelling. It didn't have. It was inconsistent, a few different sections of it.
Yep.
That was a change that was made. Strolling down.
And I think the other thing you did search and replace on was that if it was general law, you changed to mass general law.
Yes.
So that it was consistent throughout.
Yeah, I went back and looked at our existing zoning bylaw to see how it was written out, so I just switched it out to mass general law. One of the more substantive changes as we go through this is, well, I'll wait. We'll get through it, actually. So I don't want to say anything. Down under number eight, case of corner through lots, put the reference to the section in terms of the zoning code, or zoning bylaws. Actually, it did in six and eight. So before it didn't have the reference. It just said requirements. So now it just cites the section.
You said that was in, that's on page two, number eight, and number six?
Yeah, six and eight.
So when I print your packet, it's different than what I'm reading.
Yeah, it is. Six is all strike through, or the one we have.
So it was seven.
I think I have the correct one up on the screen.
Oh, I see. Yeah, because six was stricken, so it got renumbered. Gotcha. Yep. So I do see, yeah, you referenced the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I must have printed the wrong draft.
And then, so then the other one that had the, would be 13 on our page, because you struck several. Yeah, I got you.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just, we have all the strike throughs, and that's like a final.
Just a clean version.
Clean version. Yep. Okay.
I did take something I saw from Medway, its proposed bylaw, in terms of, in the design requirements.
Yep. Where did you put that? I saw your comment on that.
It's in C1.
C1. Yeah, so, yeah, we were worried about the setback on the front yard. So accessory dwelling unit should not be located closer to the front lot line than the principal dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling unit.
And I think this is a good segue point to comments of, at your last hearing, they didn't put out the final regulations, and since that time, final regulations came out, one of the things that we didn't anticipate was that dimensionally, they added accessory structures in there in terms of that setback. And so consideration would be, it's not in this, this group of bylaw changes, but a separate amendment to the accessory structure provisions in the bylaw that then would just mirror the setbacks.
That action has been put forth. Our teachers and administrators have been making it work for a long time. They will continue to make it work, but we need the space. We need to give the space so our children can benefit from having a good educational experience so that they can have something other than music on a cart, tech on a cart, potentially art on a cart, so that they can have a full curriculum. And so I am very thankful that people volunteered their time to do their due diligence and have put forward the best option we have available now. So I hope everyone will take a chance to, I know we have differing viewpoints, take the chance to learn from them, learn what the committees have done. They have done a lot of work. It's been seven years in the making, and the time for action and to move forward for our schools, for our town, for our future is now. Thank you.
Thank you to all the public commenters tonight. We appreciate your engagement. If you didn't get to finish and you feel like you have more to say, you can always email the committee, and we are happy to continue the conversation. Moving on to correspondence, there is none. The school committee chair report, we have a remarkable gift to approve. We have a gift from the Norfolk PTO in the amount of $14,694.90, and this says it's for the Museum of Science kit. Jen Wolfe gave a little bit more detail on that. She says it's the youth engineering curriculum enhancements that will provide engineering lessons to students in all grades. And that's so great because engineering is such an important field these days. So I would be looking for a motion to accept this gift.
So moved. A second.
Any further discussion?
Beyond, that may be one of the largest gifts we've ever received. So, yeah, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to move on to committee and liaison reports now, so I will hand it over to the policy committee.
Sure. Policy met on Friday, the 10th, and discussed a few things. So we have a few things to bring forward for some actual action today, which is great. First and foremost, we've been having some discussions around school fundraising, fundraising events happening within the school, and the policies that we have currently around those items. As we took a deeper dive and looked at what we had, some of those were kind of incongruent or redundant to a certain extent. So we have brought forward a couple of things to look at. First and foremost, we have policy KHA, which is Exhibit 2. We have made an incidental change to some of the language in that policy, adding item three under the second paragraph. Okay. I will do my very best, but. I'm not sure that this really amplifies me that much. Again, I apologize. I will, I will try to talk as if I am telling my children it's time to go to school. So, all right. Certainly. For tonight, unfortunately, we have what we have. So I will try to project, as will everybody else. So, sure. Exhibit 2 is policy KHA. There's an incidental change to the language to include item number three under the second paragraph heading fundraisers that involve direct marketing to students are, is, has been added into the lexicon of what is not permissible under fundraising. This is an incidental change, and so we are bringing it forward for a vote this evening. Before we discuss a vote, I would say that there's also a policy that we're looking to remove that is redundant to this policy. So those are the two votes that we're looking at for policy. So I guess we can, we can kind of proceed as the chair would deem fit as far as votes are concerned, but we'd be looking for a vote to add the incidental change to policy KHA.
Looking for a motion to.
I know. I know. Still cooking. I mean, we, our last meeting that we did on the public, for our public hearing, was a lot of the content and kind of the funk, you know, the function part. Now we're looking at the form.
Yeah.
That's great.
And actually, as I'm proofing this, I missed a unit in one of them. On C2. Was another in this one? No, wait a minute.
That reads well. C2?
Well, no, the, it starts off the construction of a detached accessory dwelling.
Dwelling is supposed to be unit?
Yeah. It probably should be unit in there with.
And accessory should be capitalized.
Yeah.
Yeah. To be consistent.
Or we've been using, hold on, because the line above says accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
So we make number two accessory dwelling unit, or accessory unit?
No, I think it should be consistent with.
Dwelling unit. Okay.
Shouldn't, let's say dwelling units shall remain accessory.
We could do the parentheses S.
Yep.
So it should be capital A, then unit after, unit after dwelling.
And then do the parentheses S in case there's multiple.
Yeah. And I just noticed on some. All right. So I'm going to go backwards again, sorry.
Okay.
Under B, three, the A should be capitalized.
Yeah, there's a lot of those words.
Yeah, you're going to have to do that throughout.
All right.
Just have to do throughout. Like five is.
You have two and four, you have five, seven.
Seven, which is the new six. Yeah.
Okay.
Find all replace.
I think, yeah, you just do a search for accessory and make them all count.
Okay. Going down to design.
Yep.
Add in the provision about the access in terms of referencing the, general came up about curb cut permits.
Mm-hmm.
So I just inserted the section of our general bylaw, which is Article 2, access to public streets.
Okay. That's a good way to handle it.
Yeah. And then.
And then you got the four feet for.
Yeah, four feet.
A driveway shall be at least four feet from the existing driveway on a budding lot.
So if the existing driveway is four feet from the boundary, you can go right up to the boundary? My understanding, like.
Driveway.
The other lot has a driveway that's four feet from the boundary, then I can have a, my driveway can be right on the boundary? Just, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I was wondering if this one was going to be more restrictive than what we offer, what we allow today.
Because you're not referencing the boundary, you're referencing the neighbor's.
Yeah.
driveway.
Driveway.
Yeah.
All right. So that would allow it to be built right on the lot line?
Yeah. Is that the intent? It's okay with me. I'm just.
Yeah, you're posing the question.
I think a lot of it also has to do with the curb cut, which we're deferring to. There's only by law on that.
What's the language on the curb cut? Is there a restriction as to where it can be?
There isn't a.
Allowing curb cut, no?
It's by permit, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's a permit. There isn't, in terms of the provision, there isn't like specifications within it.
Okay. I'm just trying to see if there's any other AHJ that's going to be looking at this from that perspective.
Just going to go and look at it real quick. Permits were kind of drivers in sick.
Yeah, there's really no detail.
There's nothing in there. In terms of it. Okay. You apply to DPW. That's it.
Okay.
And that then, the permit shall be issued for the construction of a new building or structure unless such access permit has first been. Yeah. Okay. So first you have to go to the DPW to get the permit from them before you can get a building permit.
Yes. Yes. And I don't think. Is Barry on there yet? He is?
Public works, Barry.
I'm here.
Hey, Barry.
Barry.
So. Well, a question came up about driveway locations.
So driveway location for an ADU, right now it's proposed to be, a driveway shall be at least four feet from an existing driveway on and abutting lot. So it could be, Gary Searle raised the question, way it's written right now could have that driveway right on the lot line, as long as it's four feet away from the abutters driveway.
I think the, our, the DPW, what we look at is more of the site distance and accessibility. To add to the location of it, whether it's on the lot line, how that works out, I think that would be on you guys or zoning. So we really don't look at, you know, the, where the driveway actually lies on the lot. It's more the, the site distance and.
Yeah. You're, you're more safety and site. Yeah, I got you. Okay.
Yeah. And then we, basically, we would confer with, you know, the chief, because he has to side off it, on off, off on it as well. We look at the driveway, street opening permits.
Okay. So from a DPW standpoint, it doesn't seem like it's a, you know, concern. This would allow the maximum flexibility for, for site distance, for, from a safety standpoint.
Yep.
Somewhat basic question, whether we even include it, you know?
Yeah. The distance, you mean?
Yeah.
Or that statement? Yeah.
Well, that's the thing, is like, doesn't even need to be there.
Right. Well, do we want driveways that are abutting and could be seen as shared?
That's, I suppose we don't want that, but then again, we're not.
So we'd need some language to protect for that.
But that's what this.
Is there anything that would prohibit that today? I don't see anything.
Yeah, that would be a new bylaw, like thing.
Yeah.
You could just write, no closer than two feet to the boundary. That's what I would write. You never build a fence on the boundary. Even if you find your boundary, you don't build a fence right on the boundary.
No, you build it on your side of the boundary.
Yeah, you move it over like a foot anyway. So I can't see the whole thing. But I, I would have just, just add another clause in there, just say.
But it also can't, can't be more restrictive than what we offer for a single.
pave right up to the boundary?
I don't see anything in here that says you can't do that.
Yeah, I don't think.
Then we should take it out.
Yeah, I think it probably should go away.
Then it, yeah, it's more restrictive.
Yep.
That would be more a red flag.
So strike number seven, C7.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that could be something that we kind of flag in a site plan review anyway, right? Just pointed out.
No, you're reviewing it.
We do. Site plan for ADs.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah.
So the, so C7, before we strike, the, that applies to a driveway for the AD, not the AD itself. Is that still restrictive?
So.
So where the, from the ADU stuff, technical term, we can't be more restrictive in how we apply it to the ADU itself. This is a, this is a driveway to get to the ADU. This isn't the ADU itself. So by putting C7 in there, are we actually, I'm not saying we need to keep it in, but are we actually being more restrictive?
Think the, so obviously the answer to the question is, yeah, we are being more restrictive.
Okay.
Gets that whole single family, you know, where that line is.
Okay.
So then, thinking about this with the lens on D1, are we being more restrictive by asking people to come to the planning board for approval for increasing the dwelling unit footprint of their homes?
We, so we are, but that was something that was specified from the state that we could require that.
Okay.
So it is definitely a policy, for sure. Do you want to do it? You could, you choose not to.
Right.
Right? To have no review.
For me, I don't know that I care as much about the ones where it's attached to the home versus the ones that are separate, that have different requirements and different provisions. Because that is going to remarkably change the, the look and feel and nature of the neighborhood.
So this was, this is a step down from the previous version, which was everything. And, no, I mean, kind of think, I looked at, again, when Medway was proposed, and then didn't really have any site plan review, but.
Yeah, I don't know that I want to kind of fill up our docket with people looking to just expand on their homes.
Yeah, no, it's a fair point.
Addition.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, but if it's an, just a standard addition on your home would not necessarily be an accessory dwelling unit.
No, but with regards to if they're trying to do it as an accessory dwelling unit, what are we really vetting there? That some other board in our town is not vetting already?
I don't, we don't know yet. That's where I would argue, why not leave it in there? And if it becomes a concern, then we could revisit it and modify it.
I think pretty simply, we can look at this and say, like, check someone else is looking at this. We don't need to. Check someone else is looking at this. We don't need to. And identify what it is that we're not looking at, and then weighing the benefit of having them on the docket or not.
It's our opportunity to get the abutters in to discuss the potential changes that they're going to have to live with.
Yeah.
That's why we do the segment review.
You can always just rubber stamp the ones you think that are simple. It's my, I'm splitting my two floors. Okay, it's, I'm not even going to see it. Just ask a few questions.
Think about the additional cost that we're asking homeowners to bear as well.
We're only asking them to come and meet here.
But they have to pay for the post to the notice.
Not a public hearing.
Oh, it's not a public hearing. That's right.
Yeah, it's not an official public hearing. It's just a.
Okay.
Just a review. I, I would propose we keep it in, and if it becomes burdensome, we, we consider modifying the language to reduce that burden.
I can be convinced.
Okay. Do we have your new address?
I don't have a new address.
Do we know how to find you?
You know how to find.
Yeah, so that's why this is, no, I hear you.
Yeah, to step it back a little bit, because like, listen, somebody has a principal dwelling and they're doing alterations into, and there's no outward.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking, the ones that I'm really going to care about are the ones where it's detached and it's on the property, and it's, it's a unique situation versus someone who's just doing something that otherwise they would have just gone through the building department for, you know? I'm trying to simplify process on their side, but also reduce our workload.
Right. I understand. Yep.
I do respect that. I, again, I think we leave it in, and just because we just don't know how this is going to impact the town yet. And it's, I'd rather be, have it there and then lighten it up as needed, modify it to make it easier for us if needed.
So we do have language in here, though, that says an appropriate filing fee will be required for the submission. So what's that filing fee then?
We haven't established it yet. Doesn't.
So it does say there's a public hearing. I thought it was just.
No, no, no. Public hearing for, it's a special permit.
Oh, okay.
Where, just make sure, where did you see public? You're down below, right?
One, one.
The board shall consider their quest at a public meeting within 30 days, not public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, so number three says, it specifically says for a second accessory dwelling unit.
Ah, okay, that's, yeah, that's right. Okay. I just want to make sure.
I was getting at it myself, yeah. No, it does say public meeting, not hearing.
Yes.
At the bot, last sentence of C1.
Correct.
So here in C one, you have documentation for provisions for septage, I think you mean sewage.
What's your.
Wait, C one?
D one, D one, sorry.
I use septage because it's, is it fair, petty?
Is that the right term then?
Maybe septage because it's not sewer.
Okay.
I think a sewer is being public, you know, well, not public, but.
Septage is a combination of liquid and solid waste that comes from septic tanks, cesspools and other sewer facilities.
Okay, that's fine.
In D one, didn't we talk a little bit about showing the abutters, well, and septic and that in the survey plan?
Not here, we did talk about, so this would be something that the board of health.
Right, so why do we require this whole list of things that we want to save, but it's not inclusive of, you don't want to make them go back again to add that?
Showing it on the plan?
Yeah. You tell your surveyor to do all these things and then find out, you're going to have to job.
Yeah, that would be pretty frustrating for a homeowner.
We could add, we'll add that in.
Abutters, utilities, septic and well, is what we talked about before.
Which section?
D one.
I'm just looking at.
Just adding, adding some language that they should also include a butters on the plans.
Yeah, probably would put it down in the last one, under four, which is the.
Under four.
Which is where the plan, yeah.
Who shall include a wet stamp.
Wasn't, aren't they already on there?
Scale, one to forty.
Yeah, buildings on abutting properties, names of owners of all abutting properties, driveways and utilities.
It's on four.
Or are we saying notifying abutting?
Notifying is section two.
Right, okay, okay. So we got that covered.
The last line of section two seems out of place, it seems more like it should be considered in section one. We're talking about notifications of abutters and then the last line is talking about what we're considering.
Because the decision, I get your point, I actually agree with it, but I think the reason why it ended up there is because the line prior is a decision shall be rendered and filed. So it's talking about what goes into the, what goes into the decision, but to your point, I think it's, it's more appropriate in number one.
Yeah.
So I'm still, I'm still on Eric, so I think I would add in septic systems and private wells to that sentence, and then, and utilities?
Utilities is the last one on there.
Yeah, but I'm saying I would, I would.
Right, swap it, yeah.
List out septic systems, comma, private wells, and utilities?
Makes sense.
Yeah. Let's go back up, you said something about the.
Yeah, the last line of section two seems more appropriate for section one.
Planning board shall consider screening parking bulk height accessory unit in their decision. Yeah. This two is all about notification.
Right.
Yeah.
Cut and paste that to one.
Yeah, I think. Maybe after the first sentence? Would it read there better? The same with people or any person's desire or approval of a detached or attached accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
That could fit swell there.
Okay. Probably.
There's a lot of them, it's not a lot.
No, I'm just looking at the use table, like what?
Is it the use table?
It's too much.
Is it on the?
Well, I'm just like, you have no's crossed out and yes is crossed out, but then the final is yes, so.
The final version looks good.
I think it is just the markups, the, for the review markups that we have, it just looks goofy.
Okay.
No, yes, no.
What is the asterix after the first row, accessory dwelling unit, there's an asterix? What is that referring to?
Did we ask that?
We did talk about that last.
Should be gone, and the files should be gone.
So it's strike through on here, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it strike through?
I think it is.
Yeah.
It's got an underline, so it's gone.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm good with the use table then.
Okay.
Okay.
So my, my proposal is this.
Yep.
One more, we'll do the edits, just that we talked about tonight.
Yep.
Yep. We'll open to the public too, obviously, but we'll go through the, make the edits, recommend, continue this again to March.
Right.
And then between now and March, send it to the AG.
Yep.
To take a peek at it.
Right.
And if we don't hear back by March, still could always continue it to April at least, but.
We could, yeah. Okay, so let's, so are we good? Let's open it up, does anybody on Zoom or in the room have any questions, comments on the ADU, proposed ADU bylaw? I see Peter just went off a mute.
Yeah, hi Chad, Peter Diamond over at Seacock Street.
Yep, go ahead, Peter.
Hi, everybody, I just received the language five, 10 minutes ago, so I don't have much to comment on. And the two things that kind of stand out is the word decision, so the planning board's going to render a decision. And if you render a decision, what direction does a decision have on the applicant? If it's an as-of-right ADU.
That's a fair comment.
It is, yeah.
We're not necessarily rendering a decision, we're making recommendations on modifications.
And making sure that all of the requirements are met.
Right.
Okay, I see decision in D two, last word, and D three, last word in the paragraph.
So D three is for secondary, second accessory dwelling unit, which we are making a decision on.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And D two.
That sentence is being moved.
To D one.
Okay.
And then, so we should make that say review as opposed to decision.
Yeah, it's a good call up.
Yeah.
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 Really good, thank you, Peter.
Shall consider screening parking bulk and height of the accessory dwelling unit in their review.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Render, or what is it?
Instead of in their decision, it would be in their review, or during their review, or through their review. The planning board shall consider screening parking and bulk and height of the accessory dwelling unit.
During their review. During their review. Because it's not a decision, it's, but it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That's the other reason why, I don't know that we should look at them, because it's like, if we're just reviewing it, we're not deciding, like, we're really just making recommendations.
Yep.
So 100% of the times, we're saying yes.
Ninety-nine point nine.
Well, as long as it, as long as everything applies.
Right.
I mean, it may not, I mean, we don't know.
You can't say no, right, you suppose you can, then they'll take it to court.
Right, we can't say no, and we have the building department, the health department, and zoning looking at these already. What are we adding?
I'd go back to.
Our last two meetings where we.
Back to what I started in the beginning, and if you don't want to do that, that's fine.
I'm not trying to convince you, I think I'm trying to convince everyone else.
No, but I would say.
We had this discussion.
We've had it twice, last month and the month before, and we decided that we would do the review of.
To start and see how it goes and then adjust.
I'm still playing the same hand, I hear you.
No, it's a, it's a valid point, for sure, what I would say is, ADU comes in, somebody puts one next to you, and you want to come into the town hall and complain about it, and there was no review, there's nothing we could do about it.
Right.
Okay.
And for the abutters, I feel like it's valuable for a while.
It's about, it's about the neighbors, the abutters.
That's fair.
Not all abutters or property owners take in consideration that are abutters, I mean, I get it, it goes both ways, obviously, but.
I don't believe you. But.
Chad.
Yes, Peter.
Peter, yeah, I see that whole last sentence in D two, a decision shall be rendered and filed with the town clerk within 14 days of the close of the public meeting, that's, that doesn't seem appropriate for an as-of-right ADU. So maybe I would suggest that you take a hard look at that, and then on, the planning board shall require a filing fee, and I would just hope that that fee is not that big, considering it is as-of-right, so, just my opinion.
Yeah, we, we talked about that, we haven't said that, but yeah, it'll be minimal, it'll be to cover our costs. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, he brings, so planning board should require.
What would you.
A decision shall be rendered.
If 14 is, you consider that to be burdensome timeframe, what would you want to change it to?
Well, I don't think the 14 days is burdensome.
He says a decision will be rendered, it's not a decision, it's a review.
Decision will be rendered and filed, it's not really a decision.
Is there an approval after the review, is there always like a thumbs up, is it, or is it just review with, what's the outcome of the review?
Right.
Are you given an approval?
We're basically saying it meets the, it meets the requirements, so I guess that.
That is a decision.
It is a decision, we're just saying it meets the requirements. But I guess it is a decision, I mean, we're reviewing it just to make sure it meets the requirements, but we can't, if it does meet the requirements, we can't.
It's a decision with a cat, with a lowercase d, as opposed to our other decisions, which are capital D.
I, I think you're saying you're going to approve it within 14 days, that's, the outcome of the review is an approval. I don't know if that helps anything.
I think it just says that it's filed with the town clerk within 14 days of the close of the public meeting.
The outcome of the review is filed within 14 days.
You could just say, yeah, the outcome of the, I like that, the outcome of the review is filed within the town, filed with the town clerk within 14 days of the close of the public meeting.
Yep.
That's, yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
We've removed decision, it's just outcome.
You got that, Rich? Yeah, I do, but.
He's shaking his head, what the heck are we doing?
Playing semantics with words here.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like.
Generally, though, I agree with you, Chris, I wouldn't want to make it more challenging for a homeowner, so I think when we talked about taking away the public hearing and having to put it in the paper and all of that was to make it a little bit simpler, or less cost effective, or more cost effective, but I think, just for now, with the neighbors, the abutters, I think it would be helpful, and we can decide that we're going to drop that once we have some really good role models.
Yep.
Yeah, so, obviously, we, you know, have things to move forward, generally speaking, when the project's here, we have a decision ready to go for the board. Yes, I mean, it could take a little bit longer, but they're pretty standardized decisions that can be filed right away.
Yeah. Right.
You can reduce the time if you wanted to, but.
Days should be fine. Okay, any other comments?
No, please.
Yes, we do, can you get a microphone and name and address?
All right, Joe Spastian, 38 Maple Street, awful ZBA, just clarification on the setbacks. The, we have other things in our bylaws about the, let's say you put a shed on your property and how close to, let's say, the property line, that could be based on the height of the shed, for example. How does that compare to what we're doing here for the ADUs? Could we get an ADU as close to the property line as a shed? Or are we, or are we supposed to separate what those type of structures are from what this is? Because this is an actual living dwelling versus, let's just say, an accessory shed on the property. So I wasn't clear from what I've read in the last couple of visits here, if that's being addressed.
Yeah, we, we did talk about that at our last meeting, the last public hearing, that, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but, that this accessory dwelling unit has to comply with our current setbacks of accessory structures, right? So whatever, whatever the setbacks we have now for accessory structures applies to this ADU, except for the front yard, which we identified that the front yard, it can't be any closer than the primary dwelling. So front yard is a little different, but side and back, it's whatever.
So on the table for discussion tonight, not during this hearing, but later on, is going back and amend the accessory structure provision in the bylaw.
Right, that was one of my thoughts, is that maybe we have to look at what we have in the bylaws already for something like a shed versus what we're talking about here.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and part of the confusion too, if you followed along for the past couple of months, is the, the regulations were updated like two days before our last meeting, and then it was, it was noted in there that we had to be compliant with the, the setbacks had to be, the accessory structure is what it needed to be comparable to, not a home itself. And so that changed from one meeting to the next, but now it has to be accessory structures that it has to be comparable to.
Right, but I'm just saying that the difference between a shed, let's say, close to the property line based on the height of that particular structure, versus maybe an accessory dwelling that might not be much taller, you know, are we separating that, possibly we are.
Yeah.
Again, I haven't fully absorbed everything after the minute, I'm kind of catching up to what's been going on, but, just because I'm absorbing this for my, what may come before the ZBA, for example.
No, that's, and that's a great question, and I'm glad you brought it up so that we get clarity on it, because we did touch on it at our last meeting, because that, like Melissa said, it was kind of a last minute thing that, that was kind of.
Required by the state.
Yeah, that the state required two days before our meeting, so we did touch on it a little bit, but it's good to talk about it again.
All right, thank you.
So, yeah, we're going to continue to talk about it later tonight, but yeah, thank you.
And then, just pulling a thread, is there an order of operations to making the change? Do we have to make this change to the accessory structure first before we can make the change to this? Because if we make this change first by order of the warrant, then this is automatically more restrictive until we get to the accessory unit. Or as long as it's all done in the same night?
As long as it's all done the same night.
It will, unfortunately, well, it depends, okay, but, if we change the accessory structure, we, you haven't had a hearing yet for that.
And then what if we don't? If we can't get that approved at town meeting, let's say they just don't vote for it, then.
The accessory structure?
Right, then we're automatically.
The default would be, yeah, it could fall back to the accessory structure setback.
Right, and then that line about the front lot line becomes more restrictive.
The accessory structure, though, at least in the bylaw now, is not allowed in the front yard.
Front yard, right, but it still can be in front of the house. Front yard, right, but it still can be in front of the house.
It can be in front of the house.
Yes.
Uh huh.
Right.
Yes. So, do we think we should take C1 out for now and come back in the fall and bring C1 in? After we get the accessory structure updated?
I think you go for both.
Wasn't, wasn't there an issue you'd create?
In terms of C1, the ways about the.
Right now.
Yep.
You would have some.
Or would this get thrown out by the AG and they'd say, this isn't getting ratified because it's more restrictive?
Well, look, I would leave it in and see if they come back with that.
Yep.
So because you can continue the hearing, I would, I would, I'd like to float it by, see what the AG's temperature is on this.
Yeah.
You know? Just to see, because I know there are, towns have already adopted accessory dwellings, you know, earlier. And they're, haven't heard back from the AGs yet. They're holding them. But they anticipate they'll probably have to make some changes to it.
Okay.
Okay. I'd say leave it in and see what they come back with.
That's what I would.
Good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other?
I really threw in a big.
We do, no, Rich, go ahead. And then he's getting the microphone. Go ahead, Rich.
The whole, the whole adding in the accessory structure was really a significant change dramatically to this. It may not make a difference in a lot of communities, but for, for a lot of the rural communities, I think it's a, it's a pretty significant thing.
Yep. Yep.
Thank you. Timothy Martin, 40 Turner Street. Just a question on, I may be a little bit behind on the draft that I'm looking at. I'm looking at what was once a draft on C3. And accessory dwelling unit shall be connected to town water or share a well. Could there be a separate well?
Yes.
It could be, yeah.
Okay, I mean, so it doesn't have to share a well?
Yeah, we're changing that to.
Okay, you've already got that.
Supplied with potable water from the town or a, or a.
Potable.
Potable.
Okay.
Water from the town or a private well.
And then since the draft that I'm looking at, it's a little, it's back in January. What's the, what's the proposed requirement for driveway access again? Is it, you can share a driveway or not share a driveway?
You can share.
You can share. Okay.
Both.
Was the, was the curb cut still, what was the deal with the curb cut? I didn't think there was a curb cut.
The curb cut is if there's a new driveway.
Yeah, so you have to get.
Permission from DPW.
Go through the DPW.
You gotta go through the DPW on that follow-up. The same process for just.
But with the existing curb cut and driveway, you can split as soon as you go into, you can do anything. You can take off another driveway as soon as you go into the existing driveway.
Yeah.
So this, this draft in January is a little bit dated, but it says there should be no additional curb cuts allowed.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So that's.
It's updated.
Okay, thank you.
We had to update that to allow it.
Yeah, and then there's no off-street parking required if it's, if the, the home is within a half mile from the radius from the train station.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other comments in the room or on Zoom? We, we have some stuff in chat. Looks like, Betsy, I, it's, I don't know, it's red. I can't really.
Not on my. There was some chats before.
We're fine, okay, we're fine. That was from before. Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, just checking, making sure. Okay, if there are no additional comments, then I'd like to make a motion to continue this to.
We've got a 7 o'clock flight plan, maybe 7:30?
Okay, continue this to our March 11th meeting at 7:30 PM.
So.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye. And me as well.
And, yep. Okay.
And so what we'll do is we'll make the edits and then just report back.
Yep.
Okay.
No individually, and then I can send it to the AG.
Yeah, so you'll make the edits here this week. We'll, we'll give an individual thumbs up or not. And then, yeah, you can send it to AG then next week.
Are we still talking later in this meeting about the setback for the accessory buildings? Okay.
Okay. All right, so then, next is an appointment, which we're a little behind on. For Norway Farms subdivision. So we have Mr. Kane, and I think we have his legal representation here. Take it away.
You can also sit over here.
Or you could just sit down. There's a microphone. Just gonna leave this here. Geez, I forgot.
I got mine all over my shirt.
All right, we got it.
It's okay, it's your birthday.
It's like I stabbed myself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Elizabeth Maitland. It's been a very long time since I've been here in person, and it's awfully nice to see you and the new members. I don't know. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Kane, who are here this evening in the development of Norway Farms Drive. And we appeared before you this evening with a suggestion for your consideration. And that, that, what we are proposing. Betsy, I wonder if I could ask you to put the plan up?
Absolutely.
In the approval of the subdivision, there was a sidewalk along Midway Street that was part of the subdivision approval. A portion of that sidewalk has been eliminated at the request of the town going from the entrance to Norway Farms Drive down to Lake Street. That was eliminated. There is no driveway. Our request, that was 400, and so I'm sorry, 323 feet, I believe it was. Before you this evening, we're talking about 428 feet of sidewalk on the other side of Norway Farms Drive connecting to Crest Brook Road. We're asking that the board consider eliminating that sidewalk for several reasons, practical reasons. First of all, it's a very narrow strip of land. It would be a very narrow sidewalk. It would need to meander, as you can see on the plan, going around a substantial tree with the elimination of perhaps 10 to 14 white pines along the street. There is also, in front of one of the Midway Street properties, a sort of deteriorated stone wall, collapsed wall, that would have to be removed and perhaps rebuilt, depending on what the property owner would want there. If the sidewalk is eliminated, Mr. Kane would be willing to work with them to remove or rebuild that wall at the preference of the property owner. The, the issue we have with this 300, I'm sorry, 428 feet of lineal, lineal feet of sidewalk is that it connects to virtually nothing. It connects to Crest Brook, but there's no through connection coming into the subdivision as originally proposed. The other thing that was eliminated was a trail in the interior of Norway Farms Drive leading up into Crest Brook Road for many reasons, again, at the suggestion of the town. And right now, that loop that was anticipated in the open space subdivision cannot be completed. So a sidewalk is being proposed with no nexus to anything else except a six-house subdivision. So this sidewalk would really only serve about 20 homes. We feel that that's a rather impractical application where it is highly unlikely that there will ever be a sidewalk built to completion on Midway Street. We would suggest to do so would question the viability of the sidewalk, because it's going to be quite narrow. The grass strip is going to be quite narrow. It's going to be meandering. And because of the age of the tree along Midway Street, it would probably break through and crush the asphalt in time. So that's something we'd like you to consider. And there's absolutely no benefit town-wide for this short span of sidewalk. When Mr. Kane first proposed this last summer, Mr. Crane from the highway department objected to it, suggesting that it does not comply with the master plan. And he feels that it should be done. Suggesting that the board has given Mr. Kane many gifts, if you will. The elimination of the trail, the elimination of the sidewalk to Lake Street. But I'd like to point out to this board that there is always a quid pro quo for those gifts, if you will. Mr. Kane paid twice into the sidewalk fund. Once with some $11,200. And the second payment was $11,790, I believe. So he has, in fact, paid for something that he never even asked for. Again, he would be very happy to pay into the sidewalk fund, which this board has acknowledged is a benefit to the town where sidewalks are not feasible. So again, he would be having a quid pro quo for the elimination of the sidewalk. I would also suggest that town policy very much supports the elimination of this. The complete streets policy and prioritization talks about 34 projects that the town has prioritized. Not one includes a sidewalk on Midway Street. So it would simply be a hanging sidewalk there, which we would ask you to consider is not the best use of funds that may be available to complete sidewalks elsewhere. Also, you have an amazing master plan that I reviewed thoroughly. And it too acknowledges that in a rural community like this, it is unfeasible at times to put in sidewalks. Whereas if the boards could provide funds in lieu of the sidewalks to be put in municipal areas where you have dense traffic, a lot of pedestrian traffic, in, in the memo that I've supplied, and I'm not going to go through it. I know, you, you know this better than I do, the master plan and the complete streets policy. But it just seems like there's not a great deal of benefit in putting this sidewalk there for less than 20 homes. Sorry. Also, our scenic roads, of course, Midway Street, as are all our streets, is a scenic road. And I would suggest that removal of the trees and putting in a sidewalk for very little benefit town-wide is not the best use of resources. And again, the planning board itself has accepted the policy. When you deem it is not feasible to do sidewalks, you have a sidewalk fund. You do acknowledge the importance of sidewalks, but you also acknowledge that sometimes it's just not the best application. So I would ask you to consider that. Also, the open space rules and regulations. It talks about flexibility, access to larger expanses that are town-wide, open spaces, pawn street recreation, town center, where funds are desperately needed to improve ADA compliance. And we would suggest that the funds from here could go to more benefit that would serve more people. And that, in essence, is our argument, that practically it's not the best place to build a sidewalk because it's basically floating there and serves so few homes. Whereas the funds would be much better expended into the sidewalk fund that they could be used towards the many, many projects identified in the complete streets prioritization and leave the funds for expanses on Midway Branch or to the senior citizen center. Places where the town would enjoy more benefit. So we would ask you to respectfully consider that. We believe Mr. Kane has been a terrific developer, has worked well with this board. He's very close to completion. We expect to be doing final codes this spring and coming to you for street acceptances, hopefully in Fall Town Meeting. So I thank you for your consideration. I'm sorry, my voice is just not there. But it's wonderful to see you, and I appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I know Barry's on with the DPW. Wanted to, I wanted to hear what Barry's response was.
Yep, so the DPW's perspective on this, to the points that were made. Several negotiations were made with Mr. Kane to help eliminate, you know, the sidewalk on Lake Street that actually went nowhere. Excuse me, went from Midway to Lake Street and did not intersect any other sidewalks. We worked with him to eliminate the walking trail that was on the backside of the subdivision due to, you know, other reasons. The DPW feels that eliminating the sidewalk from Norway Farms to Crest Brook is not a viable solution. It does provide, you know, a small section of sidewalk to connect those two subdivisions. The homeowners in that area have actually reached out to us and expressed their desire for the sidewalk to remain. Blair, Blair has a tree warden, and myself has a deputy tree warden. Have already taken a look at the trees out there. We won't have any issues with the white pine removal. As proposed in the plan, the sidewalk is a meandering sidewalk that will, you know, kind of meander through the front yard of the two residents, and there will be a grass strip there to provide, provide protection between the roadway and the sidewalk.
Okay. We did have someone in the room. We had a.
Hello?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah, it worked, yeah.
Hi, I'm Alex Fretz. I'm actually one of the homeowners for the first of the two houses there. I guess the question I had mainly before we even talked about the sidewalk was, when this first was brought up, we gave an easement to the Canes for the prop for the sidewalk, that's part of our, our land. And so regardless of whether the sidewalk gets decided to be built or not, our ask would just be that, depending on what your decision is, that if it doesn't get built, we would just like to make sure that it's contingent upon that land coming back to us, meaning the easement gets.
Easement's released.
Released back to us. So that would be the only thing, I think, that we would have from an opinion perspective in regards to this. We just wanted to make sure that we brought this concern up at this and made sure as part of the, the formal record.
Do you support the sidewalk? Indifferent, I mean.
I, I think when we first, my wife and I talked a lot about this. When we first got word that we're going to get a sidewalk, our kids were, you know, just two, one or two years old, so it sounded great. At this point, now our kids are 10 and 13. So for our perspective, it would be great to have a sidewalk. That being said, we understand the, the argument the Cranes, the Canes are making that from a, from a location perspective, there aren't, there are really only two houses there, and it is connecting, you know, the two cul-de-sacs that, that would be there. So there are a lot of up and coming families in those areas, so, but for our, from our impact perspective, we really aren't, we actually prefer actually most not having a sidewalk at this point because we feel like there'd be a lot of work that would go into it, and we're not sure if the, the money could be used other places. So as long as I think the easement comes back to us, I think that's the biggest concern we want to bring, make sure we brought up to the board here.
Appreciate that. And that's a fair request, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, and an added note, you know, we basically, you know, Blair and I have been looking at this for a while. One of the things, whether it is a driver, isn't a driver, it'd be cheaper for Mr. Kane to pay into the sidewalk fund than to actually put in the sidewalk at this point in time. You know, costs have escalated. Things have gone up over time. From where he started the subdivision to where he is now, there is a cost savings on his behalf to generate to, to give to the sidewalk fund. Yes, we appreciate all the money that goes into the sidewalk fund, but the amount of money that's going to be put in based on the 420 feet of sidewalk that we're looking at doesn't equate to a whole lot. We're talking, you know, millions and millions of dollars are put in sidewalks townwide.
Yeah, that's a fair comment. Microphone.
Just to address that, while I, I understand that point, again, it sounds like he just, the desire is. the desire is to make Mr. Kane pay dearly for something. And I'd like to point out to this board that, that the trail that was removed to accommodate neighbors up in Crestbrook and concerns of the town cost Mr. Kane over $10,000. He had put in the trail and then had to take it back out again. So, I mean, he has paid far and above what was anticipated to accommodate the interests and the needs of others. And I think to suggest that it might be cheaper for him to pay into the sidewalk fund is not really a fair criteria. I think it should be what is in the best interests of the town. And insofar as you're measuring that, what would benefit most sidewalk users, most, most residents of the town? And I think that's a fair consideration as to the best use of the money. And in the memo, I did outline several of the projects and put in some price tags that were included in the prioritization schedule. And while it perhaps could be seen as not a substantial contribution toward it, it's a contribution, and those, those projects are serious money. And if they benefit more people and the direct people who live there, well, the people who directly live there are not that interested in it, and other things can be done to accommodate them, which Mr. Kane would be willing to do, I would ask the board to consider that, the overall objective to the other residents of the town, not just 20 homes. Thank you.
All right, board, thoughts, comments?
I understand the point of not wanting to, you know, it seems like it's just only going to benefit 20 houses, right? And it's a small piece of land and it only connects two cul-de-sacs. But the reason that we're going to create these multimodal corridors is because we have narrow roads and we can't possibly put sidewalks everywhere. Doesn't sound like that's the case here, though. And we're going to need sidewalks to connect to those multimodal corridors when we get them someday, if we get them someday, right? And so I just feel like if we're eliminating sidewalks every time a developer, you know, who comes in and agrees to it at the beginning and then at the end doesn't want it, if we keep removing that and not holding them accountable for that, then we're not going to have more sidewalks to connect to when we have the multimodal network at some point.
Yeah, that's right.
And we talked about that with Midway Branch and connecting to some other paths over there, right? It seems like it's just a little piece, but if we just had that little piece, that's all we need to connect from one to the other in the future. And that's, that's my concern.
Yeah, I think talking about safe passage for residents across the town, right? Like, we need pieces of that to be able to expand upon and connect to, understanding the point that this may seem minimal because the impact is only 20 or 22 houses, that's still 20 or 22 houses that, you know?
It's also one of the number one things that we're asked for from every age group, every Democrat, you know, everywhere across town, sidewalks.
I think to your point, it's, it's going to look, it looks strange right now. We have little pockets of sidewalks throughout our town. Eventually, the goal is to get them connected, but they're not yet, and so it's going to look a little haphazard.
Right.
Until we get them connected. And it doesn't happen overnight.
And the projects that are outlined, obviously, are, you know, this is, this is already in the mix. When they're, when we're creating our priorities for the town, of course, we're going to start in the highly populated areas, right? And then work our way out. We need something to work our way out to. But I did see in the, the argument that there were 34 projects outlined, and Midway isn't on the list, and that's true. It's not, yet. And it was already kind of in the mix. We already knew that that was something that was agreed upon previously, so that wouldn't have
We thought we had 700 feet.
We thought we had even more, right? So that wouldn't be on the priority list. The priority list is things that are not yet worked on.
Chris? You're awfully quiet.
Could I add a couple of comments?
Yes, go ahead, Rob.
My name's Rob Kane, the developer. Thank you for taking time this night, tonight. So just to be clear on payments and this idea that I'm getting led off the hook, when the Lake Street from Norway Farms to Lake Street was removed, I contributed to the sidewalk fund at that point. And as Ms. Maitland had mentioned, I've paid and paid again for the building and removal of the Crestbrook
Yeah, the
Situation.
Yeah.
The, um, after I had paid for the removal of the sidewalk going to Lake Street, which happened pretty quickly after we had met with the board, that winter I had taken a fall, and subsequently that spring, I wrote another check for $1,100, $700 and something dollars, again, paying for that. So I could be reimbursed, but for two years now, you guys had been paid double for the amount of that removal of the sidewalk.
So you, why did you pay double again?
I don't, I, it was an inadvertent payment. It was at the point that we were dealing with Crestbrook, and I think just in, I looked through my emails, I think through conversation and through this fall that I had, that I had forgotten that I paid for it, and I submitted a second payment. And I have both checks cash.
We should look, we could look into that.
Absolutely. And the, I don't know, I've, I've tried to do, in the removal of the Lake Street sidewalk and the removal of the trail, I've tried to do what has been asked of me. The procedure is me, as the developer, coming to the planning board, is to ask for the removal, but after spending all that money on the Crestbrook trail, I certainly wasn't the one who came up with the idea to remove it. And same with going down Lake Street. That was asking me to remove it. And I think there are streets that have been put in recently in town that don't have sidewalks in them. And, you know, it just, Jean and I like to go for walks, and it's hard to walk down to get to Lake Street because of the narrowness on Midway Street, the street I live on. So we choose to go up Tucker Road, and then we run into the same situation when we try to get down to Cape Cod Estates. And there's that section that was put in from Tucker Road up to Boardman Street, I don't know, 15 years ago when Butch Vito was here, and there were specific reasons that that was put in, to keep people out of the highway traffic, out of the snowplow traffic, and keep people spaced in, but the senior center was going in. So that area never got finished. And if somebody asked me what I would like to see my money go to, it would be to finish that one section of sidewalk so the people in my neighborhood and around us could make use of a place to go and exercise. I was looking forward to having a half mile or quarter mile, four tenths of a mile loop rate at my place. That is coming on. So, you know, and that was the intent of the, you know, open space subdivision, is to provide recreation, linkage. There is no linkage. This, what's left isn't really part of an open space subdivision. And I had looked at, in looking at a response to this small sidewalk over the whole length of Midway Street, I think it's one-eighth of Midway Street, and it's probably the easiest part of Midway Street to put a sidewalk on. Most of Midway Street is cut into the side of a hill. You're going up to Maine, you were never going to put a sidewalk in up there without massive land taking, rebuilding six, seven, eight foot stone walls. And the same happens when you go down past Cape Cod Estates 1, Cape Cod Estates 2. There, you have a hill on one side, massive drop off on the other, you have, you know, one, two foot diameter pine trees that are going to have to be removed. And that's such an old road, you don't even know where the right of way is. So, I don't know, it just, to me, it doesn't work with the complete streets, it doesn't work with the new master plan, even though it's showing has a multimodal network. Finish what's on Midway Branch and have that connect through to Melis or wherever, or use it to go down to the river's edge. I mean, that's mentioned time and time and time again. You have a huge amount of seniors that live down there, or almost seniors. You have a shopping plaza down there, other offices down there, that'd be a great place to walk through. So, I don't know.
We are working on that, so that is, that is on the, that is in the orb.
It'd be great seed money to use for those projects, is my point.
Yeah, we are, we are working on that.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
So, as, as a thought experiment, not necessarily a counter to Mr. Kane, but as a thought experiment, if, if Norway Farms and Crestbrook were connected and something happens in the future on Tucker, take Midway out of the conversation, then you have some sort of, not a complete loop, but a connector, so that Crestbrook can easily walk over to the Norway Farms area and get into Tucker, Tucker to then Midway Branch and into River's Edge or something like that, like pie sky thinking, right? So it's, I just want to make sure we're not falling into the trap of thinking Midway is the only thing we need to focus on as an outlet because there's Tucker there as well.
That's right. Barry, what's your opinion?
I'm surprised because when I, previous years on the planning board, I have a decision from Tetra Tech with all the, they did, goes back to January 10th of 2019s, with the hit list of them going through the property, and this is still an issue that came up five years later. Just surprised that isn't resolved. I'm surprised that as money is expended, the hit list isn't negotiated or resolved in some manner, and we're, we're still here five years later looking at something that was on a punch list five years ago. That's, that's my first thing. And I used to live over there, and I have trees on my property that we purchased from you, and we talked about that one Halloween when you came to my house. But, yeah, I'm, unless I'm misunderstanding something, it doesn't seem like it's a dollar and cents question because you're willing to give the same amount of money it would take to make the changes? You're willing to give that to the town? Is that what I heard, or no?
The town is within $1,000 right now of already being paid for the Norway Farms to the Crestbrook lane because of a mistake two years ago.
If I may, the planning board has a policy that is enacted a certain amount per lineal foot
Right.
When, when this happens, because it does happen. And that is what we're talking about, that he'd be more than willing to do that.
And that goes up every year? Or should?
It hasn't gone up.
It hasn't gone up. It should go up. It hasn't gone up. So that cost is probably, has not been escalated with, with the inflation of construction costs. So, so yes, if you want to look at it from a dollars and cents standpoint, it, it would be cheaper to, to do a payment to the sidewalk fund than it would be to do the construction. But, but that to me, I mean, that's just my opinion, to me, it's more about, is this the right thing to do? Is it right for the community to, to build it and connect or, or take the money and, you know?
That cost is a linear cost per foot of sidewalk.
It's a linear per foot.
And in this particular case, you were talking about removing a wall, removing trees, which has always been the cost, which would have been in addition to the cost per lineal foot.
Yes, that is true. And Mr. Kane, as I said, is willing to work with the owner on the Midway Street property to clean up those stones and do, do what he would like. And just one final point I would like to make. I mean, clearly, the town has acknowledged that some streets are just not fit for sidewalks. Lake Street being a perfect example. You spent a fortune rebuilding that street, and there was never a consideration to do a sidewalk. So I well appreciate the desire for this connectivity, but there are simply some places where the streets are so old and so dangerous, it will just not work. I would suggest that this is one of those instances, that it's not a good, a good place for a hanging sidewalk, if you will, when there are other places that the application could be so much more effective. Thank you.
So I think, in my opinion, I look at it as, let's just assume the cost, the monetary is not an issue, and it just, whatever, the money is the same, whether, whether it's a donation to the, you know, payment to the sidewalk fund, or, or Mr. Kane build the sidewalk, it's, is it the right thing to do? And connect the, and, and connect the two cul-de-sacs, or take, take funds and use them elsewhere in, in the town.
I'd comment that the people that bought into the development, approved plan showing sidewalks, then they're going to have connectivity, and I don't know, it's not fair to take that away from them.
It's very true.
Or the existing neighbors that have to go through the pain and suffering when there is a new neighborhood built, and you're like, well, at least I'll have a sidewalk at the end of it.
Right, because that was part of the whole site plan process and the public hearing for the site plan, and everything was that, it was to have sidewalks.
As was the trail, and as was the connection to Lake Street.
Yep, true.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yep, go ahead, Barry.
The, the town supported the abandonment of the Lake Street section of the sidewalk as requested by Mr. Kane. We all agree that it really didn't go anywhere, so the town didn't make him do it. It was brought to the DPW, it was brought to the planning board, the DPW made a presentation supporting Mr. Kane, that the sidewalk from Crest, from Norway Farms to Lake Street should be eliminated because it really didn't provide that necessary access. Again, the DPW perspective is that that sidewalk between the two cul-de-sacs is providing an access to the people, to the residents that live there.
Okay. Any other comments?
I think, so Barry, would you mind, I think you said that you heard from some of the residents that live over there on Midway, or someone at your office has heard from them? Is, in support of the sidewalk, or?
Yeah, I can't remember which resident was, because it goes in front of the two houses, but one resident did reach out with concern as to, you know, the sidewalk going in. Like, one of them wanted to see it, I think the gentleman that spoke, I think we actually talked to him as well, he was more concerned about, you know, the dissertation of the easement and how that was going to follow. I believe the other resident was kind of either way on it, whether, hey, I'd like to see the sidewalk in, kind of to your point, that, hey, all this work was done in this area, now I'm getting something out of it. I can't really remember all the details of the conversation, we have a lot of conversation with residents on a daily basis, so apologize.
It's okay, thank you.
Mr. Kane?
Rob Kane again. Could we maybe, lest you were sort of leaning towards having a public hearing, if you thought paying into the fund or paying the small portion that I still would need to, to complete the payment? I would be happy to get my neighbors on a petition, saying that they would rather have the money used someplace else. I think that's entirely likely, the, that they would support that. The way the removal went on the Lake Street sidewalk in the Crestbrook, I think there were only five homes out of the, well, including where Jean and I were living, six homes out of the 14 lots, that would have looked at that as an overall package, if people today even look at subdivision plans when they buy homes. The only thing that we ever advertised was walking trails, and that we removed is a mutual situation. So.
Okay.
And my, just not to be argumentative, my recollection of how the Lake Street connection was approached was different than the assistant directors. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't specifically remember the details of that. I, I was on the board.
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
It was just a long time ago. We'd have to look, we'd have to go back and look through the notes.
Yeah, I remember that one.
So I think, well, Rich, you're looking for probably a vote on this tonight of?
Not necessarily, no. I mean, if you're, unless you're prepared to make a decision.
That's why I was asking, what kind of decision are you looking for tonight?
If you feel like you, I mean, if you want to hear from, as Mr. Kane suggested, some residents in Norway Farms some residents in Norway Farms drive on the.
I think it would be good to hear from, but I mean, to Eric's point, it's like, yes, there was a plan and the residents around there and the people buying it. I mean, there was a plan and the, the residents in the surrounding area, whether they came to the public hearing or not to review the plan, there was a plan. So, it's like, my personal opinion is to, to stay with the plan unless there's a compelling reason not to. And I, I, I don't see that right now, but.
I say we vote. Yeah, just to add what you're saying to what you're saying, our purpose as a planning board is to plan for the town, not necessarily individuals. You know, if you take a mile-high view of this area, it might seem simple, right? Just two, two cul-de-sac areas being joined. But if you're in, if you're in Sweetland Farm and you can cross the street to Canterbury and you have a walking path over to Crestbrook and you can take a, you know, I'll just continue with that example I used before. And then you take the sidewalk over to Norway Farms and you cross the street onto Tucker and then all of a sudden you're Medway branch and we have funding to do that, that walking path. And all of a sudden, you're all the way down to Anne's Market buying a sandwich. There's value in that. I'm, I'm sure it's, it's frustrating to have this much conversation and talk over such a tiny portion of sidewalk, but I, I do think from a town perspective, there is value in that.
Okay.
And I, I think, I'd like to take a vote. I think, I think we should, just rest of the board. I mean, I'd, I'd like to take a vote and, um, I'd like to entertain a motion to, to leave the plan as, as, and no change.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So, thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, um, next is new business, reviewing and approve some meeting minutes from last month. We have two meetings. It's Melissa.
Yes, sir, give me one sec. Too much paper.
I have the 21st printed twice.
I think I, okay, so one of those, I stayed for two votes. I think that was the 21st. I, I stayed for those two votes and then I left for the rest of it. So, can I?
That's on the 27th?
Yeah.
It's the 27th, I think it was the 21st.
I thought it was the.
Why did both mine say 21st?
No, there's, I have two for the 21st and one for the 27th.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you weren't.
So, Melissa.
21st, right? Okay, so I can't.
Yes.
You were there for part of it.
Yes.
Yeah. So, that's why we have two for the 21st because Melissa was part, no shame.
No, I think she just printed two copies of the 21st.
But they're different. They're different, yeah.
They're different, though. There's no, they're different.
Extra page.
Oh, there was one change, Betsy, that you made.
Oh, yeah, I made a change, I'm sorry.
Well, I need to know what I'm voting on.
The, the most recent copy of the 21st, many minutes.
The 21st. That has Eric's clerk, roll that out.
Okay.
There was an update to that one.
Okay, done. Thank you.
All right, now we're good. All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the planning board meeting notes from Tuesday, January 21st, 2025.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Mr. Searle's opinion?
I, I, I was here.
You were here.
I would vote for the 21st.
Um, so I have to abstain as well. Because I wasn't here. Yeah, because I, well, I came for the beginning and then I left.
That, uh. You were here for all the stuff we needed.
For the voting.
You were here for the voting.
That counts.
So, that's okay, okay.
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, and I would also like to make a motion to approve the planning board meeting notes from Monday, January 27th, 2025.
Second. So moved, sorry.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Okay. We'll pass this. Okay, street acceptance for May town meeting. Rich, looks like we have two town, two streets.
So, two streets, MacArthur Avenue, which you're familiar with.
Our favorite hammerhead.
Yep. Yep, uh, we just, we just got back the title exam and there's 13 property owners that need to get notification. So, if you remember, this was, it needed to be done through the taking process as opposed to.
Oh, right.
It's, it's not, you didn't have a fee interest in the, in the proposed because it was existing MacArthur Ave, so it was improvement to an existing way, excuse me, existing private way.
Private way, yeah.
So, there's 13 property owners. So, the select board is going to have to hold a hearing and, and take it by eminent domain. They would request a waiver of damages from the property owners. So, we don't know how this is going to go yet, obviously, because we haven't, they haven't put notice out to them. So.
But they're only taking the hammerhead piece. They're not taking all of MacArthur.
Right, just the, just the portion that's on the, right. But unfortunately, the way, you know, the way that MacArthur Ave is, there was other people who had interest in it.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So, you still need street acceptance even though it's an improvement?
Yeah, because to make it a public way.
Okay.
Yep.
To add the top, that hammerhead to the public way?
Correct, that will be, that will be public. The remainder, the remainder that's unapproved through the woods remains private. So, that's, so the town will only be accepting that one portion.
Okay.
So, the plan, so it will be coming back to you in terms of your recommendations.
Okay.
So, what I would ask is just to, to start the process in terms of forwarding to the select board and then they, they'll start the process, you know, come back for your recommendations.
Okay.
Is it complete?
It's complete, yeah.
Has built made and everything?
He's preparing the as-built plans now, so.
Okay, all right.
You started now, but you're going to be into, you know, March, April.
Right, and if he doesn't make it to May, it should definitely be by fall, but.
Then we'll.
Should be able to make it.
Yeah, second round two, we will.
Should be able to make it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this one last fall, it fell off.
Right, yes. The second one is Avery Way, which, um, that will be initiated by the ZBA because that was through the comprehensive permit.
Right.
But I'm just letting you know that it will technically, you know, by statute, you still get, the select board will refer back to you in terms of for recommendations. So, what will, my plan would be to have the ZBA provide a recommendation to the board. Someone gets referred back to you, that you can, it's more of a passive recommendation at that point. Because you weren't involved with the construction and observations of it. That was through the ZBA process. That will happen again, um, at some point. Lakeland Hills is similar, has a 40B with public road. And then also waits crossing off of Lawrence Street.
Oh, yeah.
That is another one, which is a 40B with a public road as well, so.
Okay. Exciting times?
Exciting times, yes. It's possible, I'm hoping it's not, but there's a good possibility I might have to bring Toils End Road back to you.
We just, we discussed this, why?
Really?
Only because I haven't gotten the, the plan.
Okay.
To be able to put on record, the registry. And it's, and we're.
What is that, 120 days?
120 days from the close of town meeting.
I pass that all the time now since they took the bridge away. And it looks good, you know, like it's paved, it looks good.
Doesn't look any different, this is more of a paperwork. And this is definitely a paperwork because it's the town.
Town accepted it one other time, too.
They wanted, they accept to have the deed for it, but technically, we need that plan with the vote at the registry, then DPW can put it on the.
You can't make this stuff up.
Imagine that, all the ducks.
All the ducks in a row, we need them.
Can't get all the ducks in a row.
Need them. We're missing one, it's a problem.
It's a missing duck, yeah, so, um, just, I'm hoping that it doesn't happen.
Okay.
Just give your heads up.
Me too, okay.
Yeah. That's it for Rose.
Okay.
Moment.
Except for the next one?
Well, we got one more.
Except for the next one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Was it? All right, well.
Bristol Ponds.
Yeah, so Bristol Pond, um.
I saw that.
Mallard, Bristol Pond Drive and, oh, Blue Heron Way.
So, no.
10-yard line, I guess I'd say with the developer. Reached out to him, having her back. We did send a letter.
How'd you get to 10 yards if you haven't heard back?
Um, to stop the missing. All right, well, so, bad analogy, it was Super Bowl, so I'm just sorry.
Yeah, no.
So, we did send the letter to the address that we had on record and they're no longer living there. So, it came back. Now, fortunately enough, we're, we know they're in the local area, they're a local business, so hopefully you choose to vote tonight to recommend to pull the bond, we will send it to the business location that they own.
Okay.
In Franklin, so they get notice of it, this letter, um, as well as the bonding company.
Well, the bonding company will reach out to them, too.
Yeah, so they, it's, it's possible they may come and say, wait, we'll finish it. But it's.
How long has this been? Just rough estimate.
It's, uh, 2019.
Yeah, so, there's no, I'll finish it, there's just none.
Yeah.
At some point, was it called Union Meadows Subdivision?
I don't recall that.
In the beta document, maybe they just reused a document from another.
It must have, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely wasn't. So, anyway, laying out the reasons why in this letter, why we need to have it accepted. There does need to be some cleanup, clean drainage structures, some general cleanup.
As-bills?
As-bills, there is a, a water gate valve that needs to be replaced or repaired, one or the other.
Okay.
That's out on, on, I believe it's on Marshall Street. We'll need, so this could end up being a taken if we can't get, we'll see how this goes. Because we'll need a deed for the road.
Right.
Because we don't have signed deeds yet. So, we're just starting down the process to.
And then there's also that, that like, I don't know, is it a common space up front?
And there was a common space.
We'd have to take that, too.
No, actually, we're already owned by the town.
Deed it over?
Yeah, it is already owned, yeah, it is. However, there are trees and there's landscaping that.
All the landscaping that didn't ever get completed.
And they're like parking for trails or something?
That was a, was a potential consideration, yeah.
I know, because CPC.
That was a mass, well, yes.
Yeah.
So, there was consideration for mass auto bond, I was looking to do it, yeah. I haven't heard anymore in terms of.
No, nobody's brought it back, but it is something that Cindy keeps asking about, if that's ever going to come back up, I think.
Is it going to come back up?
I don't know.
Uh, it could, I suppose.
So, the total bond is for 237,000, but we're only pulling 40?
No, no, the bond has been reduced to 40.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's 40, yeah.
Okay, so what's left is the 40?
Correct.
Got it. And so, we're going to take that, but what's the cost to complete the work that's left over?
They're, they're all within that, they should be, that money should be fine for what needs to be done.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't see us being upside down.
Complete, 40,928 dollars.
It'd probably potentially be a little bit short because when we calculated this and we released the funds, it was a few years ago and the cost of construction's gone up.
It could, we could be, could be.
There is, there's potential for.
Yeah.
To be upside down a little bit.
Little bit, but I will say that.
Some of the other neighbors.
So, in terms like the as-built plan and then the acceptance plan, we would go directly to the engineer, which is GLM engineering. So, I think we can get a.
Right, okay.
Good price as opposed to, you know, we're not trying to go out and hire somebody new to do the work.
Right.
Um, and there was an as-built plan that was started, it just wasn't finished.
Oh, okay.
So.
Yeah, it looks like it's 50% complete where it was in 2021.
Yeah, so there is some work that's already been done towards the as-built plan. Maybe steps up and.
I don't think we're severely upside down. I think potential to be a little.
I'm good to vote.
Okay.
Got it.
I think it makes sense to.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah. But, but if they, so here's, what you said is if we do this and then they come back with it, whoa, whoa, pull, put the brakes on, we can, we can pause and let them finish it.
You could put the brakes on, yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't want that.
Hold on, no, yeah, so, I wouldn't even do that. Well, that would be our option.
Okay, yeah.
Come back to us to discuss.
As long as you have enough money to finish it.
Right.
Just leave it done.
The residents don't have any more issues, they, they came in a number of times back in the day.
It sounds like the.
They do.
So, it should, they're still incomplete, I think.
I think they still have issues.
No, they still have issues, primarily around landscaping, but we're a little bit limited in what we can do.
That's outside our scope.
Right, and we've talked, yeah, we, you, yeah, we were both on the board at that time. We're like, that's, that's not us. We, we can't, we can't dictate anything on your property.
So, that didn't get resolved, none of the stuff got resolved, okay.
The, the developer didn't resolve that with the homeowners.
I go by his place every day on the way to the Y.
Um. You want to drop the letter off?
All right, let's not do this.
Okay, so, all right.
Yeah, so we need to vote.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to pull the Bristol Pond Estates bond in the amount of 40,928 dollars and 13 cents for the completion of this subdivision.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Oh, I would be an aye, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's do it.
I feel like we've had that kind of a vote in a long time. There's always been somebody who, it's got so much power and feeling.
So, town meeting warrants.
Town meeting.
Rich, so you're looking for, we made changes to.
EV?
EV, those were some minor changes that we made at the last. Do we need to go through those?
I don't, I don't think so.
I don't, I'm, I'm fine with it.
So, just vote them, pass them through.
Right. So, do you want to do these one at a time?
Sure.
So, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to propose the zoning bylaw amendment for electric vehicle charging stations for the annual town meeting, May, on May 14th, 2025.
So moved.
All those, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Okay. Inclusionary bylaws to be determined, right?
Yeah, we'll, yeah, 2BD, but I'll kind of touch on it when we get down to the MAP piece. CBA?
CBA, planning board and permitting grant authority, that was just a pretty quick change.
That was just a language change.
Language change, so, like to entertain a motion to propose the zoning bylaw amendment for the zoning board of appeals, planning board and permit granting authority for the annual town meeting on May fif- fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Floodplain bylaw, that was dates.
Does that one need a hearing date?
Hearing date?
Yeah, well, yeah, yes, yes.
We're doing it on the eleventh, right?
You can do it on the eleventh, oh, yeah, you could, yeah, you could maybe do in the end. I know you voted to put them on, you wanna do it in the end, say the hearing will be May, uh, May, sorry.
Uh, March eleventh?
Yes, okay. Yes, so you want me to amend those two?
No, you said it for her.
Nah, I just didn't say when the, I just didn't say when the hearing was, but.
You do it in the end.
Yeah, alright.
Several vote.
So the, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for the floodplain bylaw changes for the annual town meeting on May fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for the estate lots at the annual town meeting on May fourteen, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? I entertain a motion for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for special permits for the, at the annual town meeting on May fourteen, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for basic requirements at the annual town meeting on May fourteen, twenty twenty five.
Uh, can we hold on?
Talk about that first.
Oh, okay. We need to talk about that, okay, so we're not ready to pause?
I just wanna talk about it a little bit.
Okay, let's discussion.
Yeah, so.
So don't we, wait, before we discuss, don't we need to? Alright, I'll just come back to it, it never got moved, never mind, no, it never got moved, so, let's do it, discuss.
I object before you move.
No, that's fine, it's good, let's do it.
Alright.
Robert's in order, let's do it.
Alright, so, um, companion to accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Yep.
Which we did talk about earlier. Side and rear yards is equal to the height of the building. Uh, so the proposal would be to make everything twenty five feet side and rear. Now, the.
What's the benefit of that?
The benefit is really related to the ADU, so the ADU couldn't be equal to the height. If you change it, the ADU wouldn't be able to take advantage of the height to the side setback.
Alright, can you say that again?
Yeah, please.
So, if you have a, let's choose a height, right? A ten foot high ADU, you'd be ten feet off the property line, cause it's equal to the height of the ADU.
So ten feet from the property line, cause it's ten feet tall.
Ten feet tall.
Gotcha.
And so you're proposing what?
Twenty five.
Twenty five.
Which is what it was before.
No, it was, it's always been equal to the height for accessory, well, I should say always, but.
Yeah, mine was twenty five at the time that we put it in, but, um, and it's, I think it's like thirty, yeah.
Oh, you're in an open space subdivision, huh?
Other side, the other side was thirty feet.
Can you zoom in?
Enhance.
Yeah, can you make, blow it up?
Bottom right.
So I wanna talk about the downside of doing this, too, right, obviously.
Some more?
One more, yeah. One more. One more.
Enhance.
I got it right here.
It's pretty good, right? Hey, I can see it.
Two hundred percent.
That's too far.
No, I mean, I, my, yeah.
Mine's at one.
There we go. There we go. Alright. So side and rear was equal to accessory building height.
Yep.
And your, the proposed change is to twenty five feet.
Correct. Now.
So how am I gonna get my, my driveway that's on the property boundary twenty five?
Stop.
But you know what, I do remember that, although there's a lot that we talk about and a lot that's easy to forget, we can talk about it so often. This one I do remember, and we were talking about how you would want an accessory, you know, shed or something to be proportionate with the house, and if you had a smaller lot, and now we're saying you have to be twenty five feet away, then you could have a shed like only available, like the only option is the center of your yard, if you had a small, like one of the non-conforming lots. And so then we said, okay, maybe if we get, if we set it's as high as, you know, what Rich just described, you can be as far from the property line as the height of the building, then that would actually be in line with kind of, you would assume a shed would be proportionate with the house, maybe not. But that was one of the reasons that we made that decision, I believe.
Now, if you, if we were, if this were to go change this way, then we don't have a, a threshold point, so a shed, if you wanna just straight shed, now you're twenty five feet, you know, that's gotta be, or you have to go for a special permit to the board of appeals to get closer. That's the downside of doing this. Unless there was built in an exception, you know, so like if you set an accessory structure of two hundred square feet or something like that.
But you can get it from the ZBA.
What if, and there's no way we can just rename this like accessory structure, or non-livable accessory structure?
This is a word that's used in every single bylaw and every single town, so it might be kinda strange to do that.
I don't mind being strange.
I got that.
Can't add a second row, just about ADUs and.
Can't do ADUs different than you would accessory building, that's, that was the whole rub essentially by adding that in there.
We had all of this figured out, and then we got the final regulations.
Yeah.
But I mean.
I'd leave it as long as you can get a special permit, I don't see a problem with it, it's an extra step, big deal.
Just get a variance so that you can go a little closer.
I'm with Gary.
So annoying, I have like these dreams of all these two hundred square foot accessory buildings and my front yard setback.
So just as proposed, like I said, if somebody comes in, they wanna put a shed.
Hotel Monfort.
Well, yeah, so now it changes it for sheds, too, so if you want a tiny.
Oh, yeah. That's what I mean, yeah.
So now if you wanna have like a tiny little shed, and you don't have a big yard, it's gonna be in the center of your yard.
It's gotta be twenty, or you.
Or you get a special permit.
Special permit.
Which means you can't just go to the depot, drop something on your property anymore.
Okay, well, so what does that look like, though, for a homeowner, if you're put in, if you're going to the ZBA, like what's the cost, what are, I'm just wondering what the burden is.
It's just time, I think it's more time than anything else.
For some structures could kinda add up there, right, so the ZBA's fee is three hundred dollars.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it is, runs typically two, two, two fifty.
And do you wanna a surveyed plan, too?
So you'd have to have a plan, yeah.
Gosh.
Plans for a shed.
Yeah, a shed.
No, it's like five grand just for the plan. That's stupid, we can't do that. A shed like of this size is gonna be like probably about ten to eleven thousand dollars.
Yeah, the permitting process, that's, that's why we're talking about this.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, that, that would, we, and maybe the option is you have an exemption for a smaller structure, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying, is there a way we can do it in like a tiered way? I don't know.
Tiered.
This is why Chris wanted to get creative with the wording.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, but they'll see through it.
Yeah, they'll see through it.
So what, I've just got this figured out.
Yeah, some, well, some. Well, yeah, they're, they're maybe very well be, but.
Cause I mean, we're, we're looking at accessory structures, not just as sheds, we're looking at them as pool houses, we're looking at them as.
Yeah.
Dwelling units?
Well, no, garage, I mean.
A garage, right. And so what do I care if a garage is twenty five feet versus ten feet, it's my neighbors that care, right? That's what the real consideration is.
You mean you as the property owner?
Right.
You probably want it closer to the.
The property line.
Yeah.
Yeah, to use your space.
Yeah, but if I wanted to put a shed in my backyard, I'd probably want, want it in the back corner, and then maybe not twenty five feet, I mean, it's a shed.
I mean, it's up to you, right, like.
But, yeah.
Kind of, I mean, I, my shed looks silly, and it's twenty five feet away from my property, it looks very silly.
My shed's fifty feet off of the front of my, um, property line, as far over from my house as it's supposed to be. And I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
But I'm also in those like older lots where it's all an acre minimum.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I solved all these problems by just not having a shed.
There you go.
I gotta get a shed quick.
Another approach.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have a shed.
Yeah.
I know a guy.
But you do, you waste a, a good amount of your, your yard, my yard's not, I mean, it's not small, but it's not big, and it's like, I wasted a fair amount of my yard having to be twenty five feet away.
Why, why, why is yours different because of open space subdivision?
It was years ago, but it was, it is open space, so I don't know why.
Why would that be different than just the?
Height.
The open space is thirty feet.
Well, right now you can move it.
That's why, it's two hundred square feet, no way.
It's a guy with a bucket, you gotta, that's nothing.
My husband's music studio.
Yeah, you can pick it up.
Um, you could, uh, so on this topic, would a.
I want a four foot buffer on the property line, and I'm happy with some privacy measures.
So random.
That is, you just pulled that number.
Randomness that we had with the driveway, why am I random now?
I'm gonna go back, play devil's advocate here, so what's, what's wrong with the way it's written? What's wrong with not leaving it, I'm sorry, what's wrong with leaving it equal to the height?
Nothing.
Now you gotta, if you got a ten foot, let's, let's look at the ADU, if you have a ten foot high ADU, and now it's ten foot off the property line, is that a problem?
I don't have a problem with that.
Cause it is gonna, yeah, it is a dwelling.
If you got an open yard to the next yard and it's not.
And you might wanna invest the fence.
And we, we can't, yeah, we can't cover every scenario, right?
Well, there was a line that said you put a vegetative barrier. It's that.
Yeah.
Well, we nexted because it's on that, too. It should be on the, uh, the neighbor to do that.
And we also couldn't be more restrictive, cause we don't require that for a single family.
If we do it in this table, you would.
It would be that, so what, I think what Rich was proposing is that if we change it, we change, it would change for both.
Right, but you, or you can make that.
Yeah, you could change it for both.
Right.
Change it for both, any, any direction.
Yeah, we would have to now.
I mean, you don't, it's just, there was a point that was raised.
Discussion, it's, it's different for your ADU, someone living four feet off your line, then your shed that doesn't get visited, it's not used every day.
I go to my shed all the time.
Lights.
But it's her husband, he's, he's doing music over there. And I'd argue his activities in his shed are, are a lot more nuisance than mine.
Soundproofed.
Right. And hers is twenty five or thirty feet away from the property line.
Yeah, and his, his music zone, music buffer zone is what they call it.
What do we wanna do?
I say leave it.
I think we should leave it.
Changes to twenty five?
Leave it.
Leave it as height?
I mean, this is just our recommendation to the town, I mean, it doesn't mean that this is gonna get approved, but.
Right. Well, if you don't include.
No, I'm saying the change may not get approved, but I'm.
Oh, you mean to this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just saying, we could leave it and it's, we don't.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, like, we, we, we briefly looked at what, like a two-story, nine hundred square foot ADU might look like, what were the heights coming in at, do you remember?
It was small and it looked ridiculous, but it was, um, what, ten, twenty, I think it was like twenty, twenty?
Twenty feet to the top, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, like, that would put us in the twenty foot range, on the small side, you're gonna get ten feet, so you're looking at ten feet minimum already, if we leave it at height.
And you figure, too, if it's, it's gonna have a foundation, so it'll be up a little, but still, it's not, that's not that much.
It'd be on top of a garage, too.
Right, but that would be if it's already existing garage.
Existing, yeah.
I mean, this may be a non-issue.
Yeah.
Like that's what you had.
I think it's a non-issue, I think we, we choose to make things into bigger problems than we need to with a lot of this stuff.
We're thorough?
Not pointing back to previous conversations of tonight.
We overcomplexicate, yeah.
We're very thorough, yeah, I say we leave it.
Leave it thorough, we're having a, we're having a healthy discussion.
Yeah.
We're thorough, and I think we came to circle back to the point where it may not be an issue.
I'd, I'd love to understand if there's any opinions in the audience on this.
Yes. Microphone, yep.
I think we've piqued some interest.
Alright, so Joe Sebastiano again from Maple Street.
Yep.
So, my concern is that these are dwelling units, living, you know, and it's gonna have, you know, water source, you know, sewage source, it's, I, I think that based on our zoning now for, you know, houses next to each other, you kind of anticipate that there wouldn't anything be violating the setbacks you have, other living dwellings you may be living next to, I mean, like a devil's advocate for butters here in town. And this, as of right, whatever happens, suddenly it could be approved for, for a dwelling to come in within our setbacks without going through a special permit or variance process, at least if you have somebody who's trying to get closer to your property line with a living dwelling, expanding a living dwelling, they have to go to a variance to get into the setbacks, right?
So they both, they, the new regulations state that the accessory dwelling units and the accessory buildings have to be the same.
Right, and I'm trying to find if there's a separation between a non-dwelling accessory building, that's what I said earlier, is that, you know, just a shed on that property edge, you know, that you go to, you know, for equipment that you might be using to maintain your home, whatever, or even a pool house, whatever, which isn't a living dwelling in reality, I just, I wonder, I'm speaking the butter special, uh, devil's advocate, and I'm just thinking about, as a zoning board member, a zoning, ZBA member, I, I anticipate some of these things coming up.
Oh, yeah, for sure, I think, I mean, it's a requirement from the state, there's nothing that we can do about it.
We can't, we can't distinguish or delineate between the two, unfortunately.
My issues is that we already have a lot of limitations, considering the fact that our town requires, well, doesn't require, but our town utilizes wells for potable water sources, and we're also putting in septic systems, so based off of those limitations on your property, depending on how large it is, you're already limiting the locations of where you can put a dwelling.
Understood, yes.
And as such, if we're putting a further limitation of where within that property boundary you're allowed to put that property, it severely limits where you can put another dwelling on your property. In the spirit of what they're trying to accomplish, I would like to try and be a little less restrictive to kind of increase the ability of individuals to take advantage of this, as opposed to blocking the ability of people doing it because of the limitations on their property.
Well, I was just trying to think about.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
What may come, what may come before us, whether it's planning board or zoning board of appeals, the butters are gonna have something to, you know, express.
A hundred percent, absolutely, and.
And I wasn't sure if we were covering all those bases yet, that's all.
I hear you.
I see it's being discussed, which is excellent.
And we love devil's advocate, so thank you.
We do it all the time.
You see a lot of stuff when they come after you for questions about what we're doing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If somebody has an AD, like, could an ADU have, like, composting toilets and rain-catching barrels for running water and still count as a, like, that couldn't get.
Not the way that we've written it.
The way we've written it.
Right, okay.
Well, you can share water and septic.
It's a title five question, right, in a way, although, so see, that's kind of an unknown. Cause you can't.
I was just working through what Chris said, like, it's reliant on the infrastructure in place, but what if there's loopholes around the infrastructure?
But you're still within the property, you're allowed to place dwellings only within a certain distance from certain things, you can't be on top of the well, you can't be on top of your leach field, you can't be next to where the septic system is, that was part of the limitation for me when I was looking at doing any changes to my house, so.
So if I have a eight and a half foot high unit, I'm still minimum eight and a half feet away from the property line?
Right.
Okay.
And then off of that property line, you have to make sure you're in that sweet spot, not affecting your leach field, not being too far from your septic tank, if you're gonna be using the same capacity that's there, and a lot of us are gonna have to upgrade septic flow anyway.
But in my hypothetical, there wouldn't be septic, right?
Right, and yours there wouldn't be, right, and I know in New Hampshire in particular, around Lake Winnipesaukee, um, every single property that's sold has to redo a septic design because of the way that the leach fields and the septic systems were built previously, they find that they're leaching into the actual lake, and so some solutions that they're proposing are essentially holding tanks, black tanks, where they get pumped. I don't know that we necessarily have provisions for that within our laws at this point.
So, so the conversation, at least today on this topic, related to the septic aspect of it, is that, again, it's a treatment of what you do for single-family homes, so Title Five applies, and even the local regulations, if you have them, apply as you treat single-family homes, so.
So we wouldn't build a single-family home that's running purely off of rainwater and, and a holding tank?
The rainwater, well, I mean, for consumption purposes, the rainwater, what do you catch in the?
Yeah, like the rain catching barrels, yeah, they, they self, um.
To drink?
Is it gray water or?
It's gray water, no.
It's not really. Potable, it gets filtered.
I, you could filter, you could clean it, yeah.
It's like a charcoal, like you got three tanks, one's charcoal and then it just filters through. This is like, you know, you see people off the grid and North Country, New Hampshire, doing this all the time.
We just said it has to be potable water, I mean, so.
Right.
I don't think this is a likely outcome, I was just trying to think through, like, oh, how close could you, like, get it to?
Question at hand. Question at hand.
Coming back to this topic.
Question at hand, are we, do we leave this as is?
Leave it as is.
Okay.
I think we leave it.
Any other comments?
Right, we got one more comment.
I'm trying to get him up. Is it green?
Please be another crazy hypothetical.
Uh, Sean McGrath, fifty-seven Everett Street. I'm not actually here for this thing, but I do have an opinion. I actually agree that the ten foot, or like if it's ten foot shed, ten feet away, uh, because the same thing is like even a house, we're talking about eighteen or twenty feet for, for one floor, right? So that's getting close to that twenty-five feet away anyway, right? So I feel like, it's like a non, I think we're overthinking it.
Yeah.
I think it's just very simple, like, and there are gonna be like people that are gonna try that, but you, you know, just have. It's rare.
Yeah.
We like to plan for worst-case scenario.
Alright, so we're gonna scratch that, okay.
Scratch that.
So then, Rich, you want a? Well, no, you want a motion.
There is a motion, well, then we don't have to motion, cause.
We need a motion for the public hearing.
Right, right, yes.
So, so we need a motion for, um, the proposed zoning bylaw amendments that we previously discussed for electric vehicle charging stations, zoning board of appeals, planning board permit granting authority, floodplain bylaw, estate lots, special permits, will have a public hearing that will be held on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five at.
So we're doing the ADU at seven thirty, and we wanna say seven thirty-five and.
Let's just do eight, cause we're gonna run late.
To eight o'clock? You think the ADU's gonna take thirty minutes?
We always run late.
To eight o'clock.
There's other things that we can squeeze in there if we need to.
Now watch this date, be the time.
Do you wanna stagger them? I mean, cause you probably need to have a public hearing, do you have to have a public hearing for each single one of these? Like separately listed or? Okay, bulk, okay. So, I say we do it at eight and, so anyway, eight o'clock. Do, do I, has that been moved?
It's removed.
Second? Anyone second?
Second.
Okay.
Sounds like you did.
No, I'm sorry. All those in favor? All those opposed? Alright. Okay. So that's.
Anything on the inclusionary?
Rich.
But let's just, um.
That you jumped over.
Yeah, I ju, I did jump over, but we'll come to it, cause it'll be the, uh, the last.
Town planner updates?
Well, be the last item, which would be MAPC update, will tie into the inclusionary.
Okay.
The next is, um, Pondville Crossing, forty B. Development.
Yeah.
So there.
So that's at the intersection of Pine and?
Pine.
Valley?
And then.
Big lot that's cleared right now that goes all the way.
It's like a U-shaped lot?
It's much more than that, though, so, and then it makes its way up to Hill Street.
Yep.
They submitted a project eligibility letter to Mass Housing, but we had site visit today, actually. And then, as part of the process, they're looking for town comments on it, so we have, I know I shared the, shared driveway with the plans, but, um, what, what would you, in terms of visual, would you like to use to speak to? Probably the site plan?
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright.
So two hundred units and it's in review right now? What's that, what's the length of that review pro, when, when would this potentially be?
The tip, the, um, so Mass Housing has ninety days to issue a, a
Decision.
Project eligibility letter. Our last two were only sixty days, actually, the Pondville Station, which is on Hill Street, and then Cranberry Heights was sixty days. So they're running between sixty and ninety, ninety's the, the most. They did grant us, uh, an extension, a fifteen-day extension to submit comments. Originally, the comment deadline was February twenty-sixth. So what the select board has asked, that all town departments provide comments to them and that's tentative date for them back to the select board on the twenty-sixth of February. And so the planning board comments will get wrapped into everybody else's comments. So what we done, we consolidate all comments and from different agencies, departments, and then send them to Mass Housing. And then, then it's up to them when they apply back to the zoning board of appeals. But we're. Do you, uh?
I was trying to, where, where is the plan?
It was in its own folder, are there really like a hundred documents?
Sent it on January twenty-third.
Yeah, so it's in the, can you get the ZVA? Actually.
A shared drive?
Yeah.
The Google Drive?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, I see it.
So is this the same group that did the one in Walpole? Workers?
What's that?
The old woodworkers spot?
I don't think so, I thought that was, uh, I actually thought that was Pulte, wasn't it?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Was it? I thought it was para-something, Paragon?
The woodworkers?
Oh, I don't know who the woodworkers are.
The woodworkers were Walpole wood, Walpole woodworkers.
It's on East Street.
This is across from the car wash?
This one is, yeah.
Yes, this is, yeah, so that's the site layout, top of the screen is Hill Street, to the left is Valley and Pine. So if you look in the middle there, which is.
Purple?
A little bit, purple?
Yep.
That's where Pondville Station is proposed in that centerpiece. Which is not, that's a separate forty B development project, so they're showing four buildings there. In terms of residential units, there's a clubhouse that's along the right-hand side, which is along the rail bed. Then to the top of the screen is a small structure, that's the wastewater treatment plant that's housed in there. And then the top left-hand corner is where the, uh, septic field is for the wastewater treatment plant. We haven't seen, like, they haven't provided yet, but they, they did state that they already have approval for the package wastewater treatment plant from the DEP already. So in terms of that aspect of it, which would go to the DEP, so it's not a local approval. So we, we will be requesting to get those plans as well as all the information associated with that for review. On that plan, the way it looks right there, it doesn't accommodate the Medicom and Greenway. So they, they need to make some adjustments for that. Those are just the high level in terms of comments. What you would expect, comments, um, traffic, um, water. In terms of maybe supplied, but more focused around water pressure. Those, those were issues that came up, um, today. Of course, parking, stormwater, kind of everything else that you would expect. Um, those are all comments that were raised today that would, that would go into Mass Housing. As you remember, they're not gonna address staff comments until they get to the Board of Appeal, but it, it foretells them the things that people raise issues of concern. They're four stories in height. The building that's. There is some renderings, yeah, is it? I think it's a separate one. Yeah, we'll, we'll get the rendering one so you can see it. Um, two of the buildings have parking.
It's a three-point-two graphic representation renderings. It's the last one, three-point-two.
So we can scroll down. So which is common practice, they take pictures of buildings in the area and in Norfolk as a whole. Same one. Alright. We'll get it.
Yeah, you shared them like a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, no, I know, it's.
Through all these renderings somewhere.
Yeah, I'm telling you, it's three-point-two graphic representation and then dash renderings. It's a file name. Dot PDF.
This is more for, um, the people at home. I know you have them.
Uh, that's a different one. This one, when you pull it up, it's only images. Three-point-two graphic representation dash renderings dot PDF.
I know it, guy.
I don't know, I've got like five three-point-twos here.
It's the last one.
That's the one I'm on, I, oh, no, sorry.
Next one down.
This one here?
Yep.
Thank you.
There you go.
Ta-da. Alright. So in the foreground is the.
Clubhouse?
Clubhouse. The background is the, the building that's proposed to the top, which runs up towards Hill Street way in the back, which is a L-shaped building. There's parking under, underneath that.
Okay.
Yep, that's, you can see the parking underneath, and then it's still four stories.
Above that.
Above that.
Oh, so parking like that as opposed to like underground?
Is that technically, so if we take out the parking out of the equation, which is obviously above ground, is that three and a half or four? Because it is peaked on the top, but I think that might just be a facade.
If you go, we, we can get to one of them, shows kind of an aerial perspective, you can see.
It is, it's a facade, it's a flat roof, really, inside, kinda like the fire station.
Yeah. Yeah. And then they have, you know, what they have.
Betsy, go to the next picture. You can, there's the aerial, you can see it's, it's a flat roof.
Wow, that's really tall.
Be a good place to put all their air, air handlers and.
Yeah, they probably would. Most likely, but. So the, I think that, that this, so one of the comments that be coming in is that Boulevard entrance where it's located is not, it's very close to Valley Street, where it meets up with Valley Street, so that was, that was concerned in terms of.
Traffic?
Put a street light in, is that where the concern goes or?
Maybe it does.
Cars coming in.
Yeah. It very well could warrant a, a signalization.
The only entrance in?
No, there's, um, there's an entrance on Valley Street, you see right near where the red building is? There's an entrance in there.
In here?
Nope, closer, right there, yeah, right there.
And then there's one on the top left.
And then there is an entrance proposed up top of Valley Street.
You mean Hill?
Uh, Hill, sorry.
Yeah, that's Hill.
Yep.
So this is Hill?
This is Hill.
That's Hill, yeah.
Hill Street, isn't Hill Street pretty narrow?
Yes, it is.
Very, very narrow.
It's very narrow.
I mean.
It's in rough shape.
Yeah.
So if you come, Betsy, if you move the, you come downhill, come down and then turn right, that's Valley.
Yep.
Keep going, and then that's now Pine Street.
Yeah, Pine Street, correct.
Okay.
What did you say about that triangle in the center? That's a different forty B?
Yeah.
Yeah, and why can't they show that in there?
Is that up here?
No, no, the trees are.
That is Pondville Station.
So in terms of, they may, they're not gonna, they could show, when they get to the ZVA, I would, they're not gonna show it now.
Well, this is a little deceiving, cause we, it's already planned, right?
Yeah, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue in terms of that, deceiving also, but they're not gonna show it cause it's for this project when they come to the board of.
It's not theirs.
It's not theirs, yeah.
It's not theirs, well, but it's already being permitted.
It has, it has an eligibility that it has not come in to the Board of Appeals for permitting.
So both of them will be forty Bs?
Both will be forty Bs, yes. At least. That's the way it starts.
Okay, well.
Can you go back to the other plan that showed the, that in pink, cause it looked like it overlapped with the building?
No, I was in the other one, it was the site plan. The pink was on both sites, it wasn't, I don't want that pink.
I don't know what that pink was, cause that's not the.
Yeah, I think I closed it, actually.
Uh, you see it on your, on your chat, the pink, is it pink on yours too?
Yeah, I, I saw it, but I.
I don't know what.
I don't think it's the property lines, though.
No, no, it's not, it's not the property lines.
Right there, that's.
What is that?
Overlapping the building.
What does it say?
That's the overlay district.
Oh, the MBTA overlay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Alright, there you go.
In my mind, it's upside down.
Yeah. So.
So their main entrance, it, it is very close to Valley.
Yes. So traffic management, traffic in the broader sense too, because it pertains to pedestrians as well, so it's not just vehicles. So when we talk about that's, those are concerns. It may look. I think that it needs a lot of work in terms of the, there's a lot of different aspects of this.
Which edge is the Medicom at? Is that on the top of the screen?
I think is it, this.
Kind of that blue.
Well, there's the rail bed, right?
Yeah.
You got that, that's the.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
So they're, they'll need to make adjustments, cause they're. I would, so I suggest them to either in the way, so to speak.
Of the Greenway?
So forty B can obviously bypass our density for zoning. Can it also bypass the height restriction?
Everything.
Everything.
Including our setbacks.
Including what?
The setbacks.
Yeah.
Okay.
So their sheds can be right on the line.
Yep.
Yeah, they could do a whole bunch of sheds if they want.
One big driveway.
I don't even mean to laugh.
Rich, I go by statement.
Rich, should I go by statement requirements, right, no, town requirements, is that?
Bypasses our zoning?
Yeah, they, what they do is they have to submit when they find, apply to the Board of Appeal, I'm just pointing that way because Joe's here, but anyway. They have to submit what a detailed list of all local regulations they're seeking waivers from and then the Board of Appeals will have to go through those waivers and they'll have to justify those waivers that they're seeking from. But it's broad though, because they will need to file with the Conservation Commission, because up in the top of the page, up by Hill Street, there is a wetland near the abandoned rail bed. So, the local bylaw would not be applicable in this case, but
Is that up this way?
Yeah. But the state
Conservation?
The Wetlands Protection Act would be in play. As I mentioned earlier, they're doing a wastewater treatment plant, so in terms of wastewater, it's it's not really, there's not really local involvement. However, there are local regulations, so they will have to seek waivers of them because there are local regs as it relates to wastewater treatment plant.
And that, that was an actual footprint for the wastewater treatment facility?
Yeah, this one that showed the field.
With rail, size-wise.
Would they have to go to the Board of Health for a waiver?
No, it'd be the Board of Appeals. There's filing fees, those, all those things, yeah.
I was only asking if that supports 200 units, the size that they got shown, is that, or is it just a circle for wastewater? That's been sized to meet the 200?
We need to validate, I will say that, use that word, but they did get approval from the DEP for a plant the size for this development. But I'll use validate, you know, I don't, not presuming anything, but... What's that? Yeah, it will be period, yes, yep. So, it'll be a third-party review on behalf of the Board and the town. It's...
And can there be conflicts between the site that's wrapped inside that's a 40B? They have, what are they doing, do you know? It's, it's the same thing, they're doing their own wastewater treatment?
They're onsite septic. And they're less than, they designed theirs to, they'll be Board of Health for theirs. It's less than 10,000 gallons a day.
So, the other one, remind me again, what's the, what is the number of units for the other?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, and then this one is proposed at 200.
200, yes. They were, I think, they were all at one point collectively together.
Oh, yeah, that's right, a while back.
And...
So, they're going up to Hill Street with all their traffic?
Yes.
Fifty-nine units.
Yes, yes. And, and, I mean, yeah, they're 59, but as you can see, there is a
Yeah.
A road out to Hill Street that for this development, so it's not just, you know. So, those are, so anyway, in terms of, just saying, that's wrong word choice, but what comments would you want to include to mass housing?
Well, my concern is on the access to Hill, Hill Street is just really not.
Can we question like traffic stuff, or at least raise concerns, because
Yeah.
It's like, it's not like Valley and Everett don't already have issues during peak traffic of people rushing a left-hand turn, getting T-boned, you know? Like, this just seems like it exacerbates some of those issues without road improvements.
Yeah, I mean, Hill Street needs road improvements, the entrance on Pine Street is, in my opinion, too close to Valley. That's a huge concern. I, it, I don't think, I don't think it would ever happen and I don't think you could do it, but it'd be nice to have some interconnectivity between the two properties, the two 40Bs, but if I recall, there was gonna be retaining wall on the other one and so, I don't want to part of that.
Well, it doesn't hurt at this particular point to raise issues, for sure.
I think it'd be nice to see some interconnectivity between the two just for traffic flow, I think it would help. Those are my concerns off the bat.
If we think of traffic flow from, let's just say, a little bit before Everett heading towards Foxborough, coming down to where Four Kicks is, right, that has long been, you know, I've only been here 10 years, but I've been to multiple Select Board, Planning Board meetings where that is a huge concern with the residents because of, you know, even if the actual traffic, the accident rate or fatality rate, you know, because we've had Norfolk Police run the numbers on it and say, well, it's not as bad as you think it is, but there's, I mean, there's a lot going on there, it feels like if there's gonna be a mass density of new units, right? Like, the, we would have to consider reconfiguring how, how all this stuff flows and works together, between Joffrin and Cottage, Car Wash and the Medical Center and, you know, Valley and I mean, this, that's just, there's
Too much going on.
There's a lot of metal moving downhill.
Literally.
That, that's, that's my biggest concern aside from just the sheer absurdity of the, the buildings, but, you know, it is what it is. To do, do, to do what we can to protect the residents, I think, and traffic would be my biggest concern.
Anyone else?
I mean, I always have opinions, I'm sure that I'll have some for you, until when this meeting started, I thought the two developments were the same.
Me too.
They sounded so similar, so I was kind of taken aback when I realized there were actually two developments in the same area, plus it's, you know, that is our overlay district, so there could be more development over there. So, I'm sure I will have some concerns that I can send out, but I can't think of any at the moment aside from what Gary already said, yeah.
Traffic's the big one.
You already talked about metacoma and the grant work that's already in place. That this would pose a problem too.
Yeah, that, that will definitely be one of the comments, it was raised today, so.
You said water pressure?
Yeah, water pressure.
I'd like to open it up, I mean, if anybody in the room or on Zoom has some questions, comments, yep, grab a microphone and...
Good evening, Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Pondville. Forty-three years. And when my husband and I bought the red house at 26 Valley Street, everywhere was commercially zoned. Valley Street has been a connector from 1A to Pine forever. And Mr. Sullivan, you certainly summed up exactly what life on the road is like down there. It used to be, I was worried that our house would be surrounded only by commercial buildings. And I guess about 10 years ago or so, when Walter Byron was on boards, a bylaw change was made at town meeting, allowing residential by special permit. I was deliriously happy. And what I've wanted, and I wrote a book about Pondville, which you know, I'm not bragging, I'm just saying that I said one day, I'm gonna write a book about this place so that no developer would dare tear my house down. And I happen to love the book and it does go back to the very beginnings when Daniel Pond, Elijah Pond, and actually Everett Street was settled in 1680. Days of witchcraft trials, but we didn't have any of that in Norfolk. Anyway, my main concern was protecting residential and anybody who came to Pondville looking to develop. As long as they were thinking residential, I was, I was with them. And I did spend quite a ti, quite a bit of time speaking with Paragon Investments. Three long meetings at our house and it wasn't until last week's Select Board that I heard, I was in the audience, 200 units and I was absolutely blindsided. So, I frantically started writing notes to myself to find things out, such as what constitutes a unit? I thought, well, probably a kitchen, a bathroom, a living area, one, two bedrooms. And I kept thinking, 200 units? How high are they going to be? And so, I thought, a bunch of Pondville Medical Buildings? I happen to like Pondville Medical. I believe from listening to tonight, the buildings on this plan would be higher than Pondville Medical. So, a while back, I had started to think of my little Pondville, a little hamlet that Daniel Pond developed way back 1730. I thought of us as the high-rise city of Pondville and it makes me sad, it really does. So, because residential was what my husband and I had hopes and dreams of, the 200 units has completely changed that and I am not in any way in support of this project. In my opinion, after 43 years of living there, it's traffic, 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 both ways, certain times of day, it's worse than others. Water supply, and yes, Mr. Sullivan, water pressure is all of a sudden a problem that will pop up. I'm real good, I have all my phone numbers taped to one of my kitchen cabinets and I call up immediately and the Norfolk DPW, the Norfolk everything is phenomenally good. And yes, Betsy, we'll get right down there, we'll take care of it, don't worry. Calm down, dear. And public safety. I am very worried about public safety, the sheer numbers. Now, 39 was referenced on this plan, Rich, what about 35? Is it?
Thirty-five is
It's hard for me to see that.
Yeah, it's more where the
Where the pink?
Where the Boulevard is.
Is the Boulevard, oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
And a little bit to the, a little bit to the top of it.
And you know, the yellow house, that's 39, where would that have been?
More in here?
Yeah, more in that, generally in that, yeah.
Okay, and all the way, where was the bridge, the railroad bridge that crossed 115 that has been removed?
Down the bottom.
That would be, yeah.
The bottom corner.
Yeah, right in that corner.
So, this would be
Oh, okay.
Yep.
The traffic on Pine Street coming off of Route 1, going down to the lights by horse and carriage is a nightmare. Getting out of Valley Street anytime after 3:30 is really bad, especially if you have to take a left and of course, I go to stop and shop 800 times a week, so we sit and wait for cars so we can scoot out. So, my personal feeling is Pine Street is already heavily traveled, coming off of Route 1 and often, of course, Patriot's Place is the big draw. But the heartbreaking part for us, and of course Everett Street, Everett Street has its part of the story, mine is Valley. It's a well-known quick route from Pine to Dedham and vice versa. Traffic abounds is fast. 115 and 1A, which I have said, and it's not fun. This is a neighborhood. It doesn't feel very neighborly with this addition. It does add to residential, but it adds too much. All things in moderation is a very good cliche. So, quite frankly, I have always supported residential development. But plainly and clearly to me, this is out of the question, it needs a lot of downsizing. I am starting to get telephone calls from people as soon as they heard the number 200. People in Pondville, I mean, people call me the Mother Goose of Pondville, that's kind of a lovely, cute little nickname, but it's endearing and I am happy that people feel, but see, I gotta talk to you about this 200, what is, I've gotten emails. I'm not able to calm people down, I, I just say, yep, I hear you, I agree. So, this project in its present form, and this is just uncomfortable for me to say, but I'm not with it. Now, the 59 units of Nate Hunter was referenced, is that correct, Nate Hunter?
Yes.
And I will say that I had, I have a completely different reaction to that. And Nate Hunter worked very hard to keep Nate, my husband and I, Nate, very informed as to what it was he was doing and he communicated often. Nate and I didn't used to get along because I couldn't stand him, because I didn't, I, I saw him as invading, but he's not. But the 200 is. These are my personal opinions and I appreciate the opportunity to share them. And I have confidence and faith in, in the Board and all the meetings to come and when it gets to ZBA, it will continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I talk a lot.
Thanks. I just wanted to add, when you looked at that beautiful picture of it from above and of all the trees around it, it looked like it was the old hospital, right? Like, there's actually houses all along there, like, the beautiful farmhouse on Everett, it would literally be behind that four-story building, the way they had it set up, it'd be right behind it. So, it's not like, it will impact not just traffic, it'll impact the lives of all those people too, right?
Right.
Also, you have so many families that have now moved on Everett, before Everett, you know, it's, it's very busy, right? But like, I live on Everett, there's a family across me, actually two families now have kids next to me, all the way down, right? So, you, there's no sidewalks, there's nothing there, cars fly, right? So, like, I can't imagine how many cars would choose to come out of there and go down Everett, but same with Valley, same, like, to her point, but like, I just can't imagine the way that they make that look, well, it'll look nothing like that, it'll ruin the entire area. I guess my question for, because this is all new for me, what rights do we have to maybe not stop it, but help reduce, like, I, I, we don't know, like, what, what are the steps that we can do that? Like you guys said, 40B got a lot of this through. Is it a done deal then? Like, what's the?
No.
Okay, so like, what, like, at what points do we have the ability to have input and, and influence? Okay, so like, at what points do we have the ability to have input and influence?
We can make recommendations, we can ask them to do certain things, but-
They can just ignore you if they want them?
I think the biggest thing is when you start factoring in like traffic, impact to traffic-
Safety.
Yeah, safety, having the main entrance in such a close proximity to another intersection. So things like that definitely have a lot of impact with them when you start concerning safety and traffic impacts. Because, you know, Hill Street, we all know that, that is not a decent passable-
It can't get wider, right? I mean, and only one car can fit where the old-
Right.
As you guys all know.
So that's another good point, yeah, I kind of forgot about that.
Only one car can go at a time underneath the train track.
So those are the big ones, is, you know, how's it impact the community from a safety and traffic standpoint?
And like, does it matter, like, you have these huge monstrosities now, basically creating shadows over houses, like, I mean, it changes the entire area, so this is-
Our board just gets a preview of this, but really, it essentially goes back to ZBA and this is our one time to provide comments in general with all the other boards, but really, it's gonna live with-
So is that next step, is zoning board approval? Is that-
No, it'll be, they'll go to the board. Eventually they'll file with the zoning board of appeals and that's when there'll be public hearings and you can attend those and, you know, raise the points up then that the ZBA can hear those comments and then ask them to be addressed as part of that permitting process. You can certainly, if you wanted to send us comments, you could email us now if you want.
Yeah, what did you say the deadline is, that we have to provide-
Twenty-sixth.
Select Board, 26th?
Yeah, 26th. So I mean, you're welcome to send, if you want to send your thoughts in terms of, we can pass them along, it's just, they won't be, it's when they get back and they come to the town is that's when really we dive in, they'll be diving into these topics to get a response.
This will just be a preview to them.
Yeah, it gets a preview what ahead for them as they come in.
Like Betsy said, I'm all about more residents, but I'm also, we also moved here because of the small-town feel, well, that totally changes the entire feel, right? And they're rentals, they're not even owning, that's a 200 rentals.
That's right.
You know what, so I will say, there is one benefit to that, and I'm not saying this is a good thing necessarily, that this is gonna be built, but we've been trying to get to our affordable number in the town so that we can say no to 40Bs, this would get us over that number, but-
But it's only temporary.
It's only, well, it's only temporary, but it's also a fair amount over, so it would take a while, but it's also changing the character of that whole area, so.
No, I appreciate your feedback and definitely send in your comments. Unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately, when it is a 40B, we just, we can only make some suggestions, some recommendations, and then it goes to the ZBA, if we don't have, we can't do, we don't do a plan review.
The feedback though, about safety and stuff is helpful.
Many people are taking it every month, talking about the specific neighborhood concerns and take all that into account.
At the ZBA meeting, they'll have a lot of residents attend those hearings, specific to take that feedback and try to work with it.
There are probably some on file. It makes me think of, is it Buckley Man is the site? And there was tremendous turnout for that, by the local people, so all of that would be recorded somewhere if the residents around this area wanted to see what those meetings are like.
Do you think Buckley Man?
Yeah, well, there's no site there, but I think it's for different reasons, the ground was contaminated.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
But you can at least see-
Yeah, you could YouTube, I mean, there are, because those were recorded.
Yeah.
NCTV, so if you wanted to-
Yep, do we have anybody else on Zoom that wanted to?
Yeah, there's a gentleman, Dan, he said-
Dan, go ahead. You're, we can't hear you, Dan, I see the mouth moving, but he's not muted.
I heard him.
Nope.
I can hear you. On the top light. Nope.
What time do we, our TV cuts out. Did we lose audio?
Yeah, now we got you.
Now you have me?
Yes, yep, go ahead.
Perfect. Dan Casmeric, resident at 48 Everett Street. I live in the Henry Kirk Pond House. And interestingly enough, that site that Sean was talking about with the 85-foot-tall building would be my backyard view, so I am astounded that this is in front of the board and being proposed. It is a disaster in the making for this neighborhood. It goes without saying that the traffic concerns are foremost, and you can't fit sidewalks on any of these streets, Everett Streets, a nightmare even with the speed humps. It's pretty frightening, actually, seeing this. I did have one question relative to the site plan, and that was that the original railway sliver that is, you know, goes the length from Pine to Hill, is that, I saw an overhead rendering that looked like there was a lot of trees, you know, next to the rail line, but the site plan suggested, based on the access, that that building, that large L building with the 80 units was very close to the residential lot line, I guess you could say?
Right.
Is that true?
That's right, so the rendering, the rendering shows basically just the buildings for the site and trees everywhere else. So the rendering doesn't show any of the other existing homes or anything else, just for clarity. So the rendering is a little misleading because it doesn't show the existing conditions.
So that right, so in the site plan, that right, that eastern edge, the green line, is that the residential abutment to the residential zone?
That's the property line, which is, and that rail bit is split between, yeah.
Yeah, there'd still be that sliver on the other side of that, yeah.
On the other side of the rail?
Those are the rail, those are the rail that was inside the property line?
No, those are parking spots.
Oh, oh.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it runs, I think you can see my cursor, it runs.
But they're proposing going up, right up against the residential district?
Oh yeah, they're-
Yeah, they are, that's right.
Have to buy by our buffers, correct?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, because that doesn't appear to acknowledge a setback or a buffer setback or a dimensional regulation setback.
Correct.
They don't have to follow the town's zoning bylaws for that.
I remember one 40B.
Yeah, so they'll, they propose their development as is and then they need to request waivers from those requirements from the zoning board of appeals.
Can the ZBA say no?
They can-
Not flatly no.
Not flatly no, there needs to be a nexus between a no and, so it has to be-
So setbacks, height requirements, that they, those kind of get thrown out? They apply for waivers.
For the planning board's consideration, you're talking about a one-stoplight town no longer, because there's not a single way that this is approvable without some sort of traffic signal devices at either the end of Everett, along Pine, or probably more importantly, between Valley and Pine, or at both locations.
There would have to be a traffic analysis and-
I think that's fair and we could drive that, I would assume.
Right. The proximity to Valley intersection, it really concerns me.
Mm-hmm.
Do they have coverage that entrance that place, Valley?
Yeah, almost forces you to reconfigure streets at that point, right? Like, and so, Rich, like, traffic study can be part of the-
Yeah, part of this, absolutely.
Even though there's parking under a couple of the buildings, it still looks light, is it supposed to be one space per bedroom and then other-
Parking at 1.6 spaces per unit?
1.6 spaces per unit.
So part underground and then under, overhang and then-
Which is, it meets, I mean, it's a tenth above our requirement, but it's-
Okay.
Our requirement's 1.5, so.
And this meets, you're saying this is already at 1.6?
Yeah.
This reminds me of the Avalon development in downtown Norwood that was done as an affordable project. And it seems to start to suggest that type of scale and I don't know if anyone's had a chance to drive through that, you know, that little development in Norwood, but I mean, it is, it is quite, it is quite the development. It has all the same features that it looks like are being proposed in this site plan and, you know, we would be, we would be another one of those towns.
Yeah, no, it's, and that's why we're talking about it tonight, so, I mean, send your, I think it'd be best if, you know, send your feedback to us so that we can submit it as, as one kind of unit. And the deadline's the 26th for us to submit of February, so, yep.
Yes.
So please send us your comments sooner than later so we can compile them and send it on.
By when?
Well, the deadline for us to submit is the 26th, so it'd be, yeah, I would say, get it to us a week prior. Send it to Rich.
I can't remember exactly, but the closer you got to getting to the 10%, you had more influence on what could be built. Did I get that right? Am I remembering any part of that correct? So where are we, we're over 5%, right?
Yeah, a couple of years ago we were at 6%.
Does that change the influence you have?
Well, we're, once we, units did fall off, I was talking to Sue Jacobson about this the other day, she's putting those, submitting to the state to be added back, so we get us to 5%, so we'd be sitting in that roughly 5% right now, so.
And does that give you more influence over what can and can't be built? It doesn't.
No.
Okay.
I mean, 10% is the, is that bench, is that benchmark in terms of?
At 10%, that's when we start to have upset.
10% is that point where, no.
You can stop it, but there's nothing in between. I thought you had more influence.
So there is what we call safe harbor, which you can, you can get a reprieve for two years for this scale, either one, actually, Pondville Station, because 36 units would give us two years' pause.
Yeah.
So it's just a temporary measure, it's not a long-term, but, but also the fact that, you know, there's, there's a real possibility that Cranbury Heights, Pondville Station, which is in the middle, and then this one, they may all be in. I don't know what's gonna come out, obviously, but-
And then, Rich, those numbers don't take effect until after construction, so you can approve a plan, it doesn't get built, and that doesn't impact-
So they don't fall off, yeah. So the, they get added temporarily.
Okay, it's temporary add.
And then they have to get occupancy permits to stay on there.
Gotcha, okay. So after it's approved, they get a temporary add, that's to allow them to get to completion for your certificate of occupancy, okay?
Yeah, I think it's 18 months.
Okay.
So if Nate Hunter came first with his plan, and you said we would need 36 to have a hold for two years?
Mm-hmm.
So if Nate came first, then this other huge one could be on hold for two years?
They have to get all the way through ZBA and get approved and then-
Get approved, yeah.
But if that happened, the answer would be yes.
Extend.
If the stars align.
He came in, yeah.
What happened, and I also forget about the, is it 40R? If you were gonna change, and does that change the requirements for affordable? Sorry, I'm going down rat holes, but I'm just trying to understand the stuff.
There was thought that perhaps if this was to be done, it could be done as a 40R, which has less of an impact in terms of the, if you do a 40R and 25% of it's affordable as a rental project, you get to count all the units, but the benefit of that has been lessened because they are now requiring a three-bedroom. So before, you could do a 40R and do one and two bedrooms, and so that, there was more of an advantage per se, because it actually, because there is a real need, demonstrated need of one and two bedrooms, clearly, and there's a need for three, but, but when you do a 40B, you're strictly, you have to do 10% of a three-bedroom, so that's been taken away. Because we had discussions with the state and they're like, well, they're changing the 40R policy that it's gonna be three bedrooms. There is a financial incentive payment, so, I mean, the town gets a one-time financial incentive payment for creation of district and then they get $3,000 per unit after they get occupied. And then there is a provision that has a 40S, which is tied to school impacts, so if you had a 40R project, they'll look at local revenue, state aid, excise tax, et cetera, and if the town were to be upside down in terms of school impact, you can get additional money for that. So that's, that's still there, but I don't know, I don't know if this thing could be flipped at this point, you know, those are kind of all one-if scenarios, but yeah.
I guess you're not in the school extension.
Nope, story subject. All right, any other comments, it's just kind of-
No, not for this specifically, but it's gonna tie into the next topic discussion.
Okay.
All right, so let's talk about MAPC update for town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again.
Good to listen to this meeting.
Come back anytime.
I have so much respect for this committee. I've seen you a few times. I know, and pleased to see you again today.
So I put in the shared drive-
PowerPoint?
PowerPoint from-
I need a break.
Find it.
Zoning feasibility analysis?
Yes.
I think I renamed it.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's what I could-
There you go, I had it.
Oh, mess, oh, here it is.
First of all.
Oh, housing production plan highlighted section?
That's my own kind of-
Oh, okay, oh, MAPC Town Center zoning feasibility.
Yes.
There it is, okay.
So this is really just to consume tonight, and I don't have, so MAPC met with Jawan and Alexis and, and what I suggest is that, you know, you kind of give consideration, think about what's been in this presentation and then have a more in-depth discussion on it in March. I don't think I have a pretty big agenda in March, but it's not, although Chris stepped out a moment, but I know the March is still not full outdoor activity time yet, so I don't know if the board would consider meeting a little bit earlier on this to have a little more discussion about this topic. One of the things that we talked about is, so essentially what this is showing, and this is, this analysis was for Town Center, and it related to the existing B1 zoning and also as it related to the inclusionary bylaw.
Okay.
All right. So you can see they put together-
So green good, red bad, I'm assuming?
There you go.
Okay.
Green good.
A lot of pluses. Pluses are good, minuses are bad?
Minuses, right, exactly.
Making sure we're.
I'm speaking my language.
It's a, it would, which is not unexpected, I would say.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have any affordability.
Yeah, profitability is great.
For the unexpected point, though, right, like, expected things to change, we had the same thing in the B1s, like, this is the same matrix that we had.
Yeah.
Four or five years ago. This is a drastic difference, like, like, very drastic difference than what that matrix showed before, so I, I am, I'm not surprised the numbers changed, I am surprised at just, like, how little of the green sweet spot exists right now. Like, it almost says, like, yeah, just give everything to developers at this point, because you're not going to get anything built otherwise, so it's, yeah, eye-opening.
It is pretty eye-opening. And how it kind of. Ties a little bit to the previous discussion is. The change in the inclusionary bylaw, it went from 10% that scaled upward to 20%.
Right.
Has created a, it was, created the effect where doing housing under our bylaws isn't financially feasible, and so they're, they're being forced directed towards 40B developments when it comes to these housing developments.
Right.
Well, it also seems like the commercial requirements are also playing a bigger part than.
The commercial is a bigger part, so it's a little more dynamic here, because it's kind of a, like, it's a mix between the two, it's like, you can't say one versus the other.
What do we require for commercial now, 75%?
So ground floor is all commercial?
100%, right, so. So at 50%, no level of affordability requirements is even remotely green?
Right, if it was a two-story.
Right.
And we're talking two and a half, right?
Yeah.
So you're at, what, 35%?
35 now.
So, yeah, it doesn't.
Rich, I'll eventually stop interrupting you, but I just feel like at this point, like, this doesn't feel like a win, there, there's no wins here, if there's just, like, it's cool that we have these numbers, but this doesn't.
No, it proves the point, I think, that our current inclusionary doesn't work.
But also the town's want, or the residents' want for mixed-use commercial ground floor is also not.
Right, it's twofold, yeah.
Well, and so this is just looking at, like, the downtown area, right? But I think there's, it, it proves the point that even if it's just residential, even if it's, what is it called, Cranberry Meadows? They were originally supposed to be a traditional-built neighborhood, right? And now there's more than double the amount of units, and it's a 40B, but the only reason that you would end up going in that direction is because it was better for you financially as a developer, right? Like, that's the only, that's, that's how developers make decisions, for the most part, in my experience. So is there a way that we can get some financials? I, I created the, like, quick and dirty spreadsheet of just, you know, a traditional and what it looks like with the tiered inclusionary bylaw, do you think MAPC could give us, like, some sort of an overview of what, how that looks for a 40B, so that we can compare the two? Because then we'll at least be informed on the residential side, and then we also need to work on this, but.
So they, they do have some financials that they're going to get to us for the March meeting to go through this, to kind of back up, to kind of back up what this is showing graphically, from a numbers perspective, so yes.
March meeting's going to be long.
That's why he wants to have it earlier.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to, you know, get you a little bit earlier.
We have a lot of public hearings in March.
Okay. We do.
All right, well, let's get through tonight, let's worry about March.
No, no, I told you, but, but so for tonight, I'm not really asking you to.
You're just, this is a preview.
This is a preview.
Okay, so, sweet spots are.
I mean, the one thing it does, at the macro level of this, it, it does speak to, like, which is hard to do, is flexibility, you know, these projects are, you have more structure requirements in the zoning bylaw, but yet each development has its own nuance in terms of.
Yeah.
Its developability, financial ability, et cetera.
Yep.
I don't have the answer yet, but I'm just saying, that's what this kind of speaks to, is like.
We're not flexible enough, obviously.
Right.
They can't make money unless it's all residential, which we don't want downtown, so.
No.
We definitely have to figure out something.
That said, if stuff's going to get built, I'm just playing devil's advocate, it's my own emotional thought here, if stuff's going to get built, 25% commercial is better than all residential 40B. Yeah, because something's better than nothing.
They never asked, build a fourth floor, I still say fourth floor goes a long way to solving this, we're limited by three floors, that doesn't seem like it came up anywhere here.
But remember, we, we had those discussions, and it was like the residents were really, like, there was that limit, right? We're like, we get to beyond three, and it was like a no-go, right?
I, I think they were never forced to look at, if you don't do this.
Sure, yeah.
This is what you're going to get.
Right.
Before it was a wish list, what do you want?
Right, fair enough, here's the realities of it.
Yeah.
Here's more numbers that are updated.
Yeah.
So, can we go back to that slide? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I kind of like that idea, like, thinking of option four, 10% affordability, or even 15% affordability, and giving them another floor.
15's about a wa, well, if you add another floor, that changes the whole matrix, though.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Well, it could move, it should shift the green up.
Yeah.
The residential is where they're going to make all of their guaranteed money.
Right, right.
Yeah, because one of the things that they talked about is the risk in commercial.
Yeah, huge risk, especially around here, they could be empty for two to three years.
I don't necessarily need to see, like, commercial-lined streets in the center of the town, I don't think we'll ever get.
That was the dream, Chris.
Yeah.
It'll take us like 50 years to get to that point.
I know. I think you will, once, once you start having enough residential here, we just don't, in the core, we don't have the density.
Well, so the, the, this is what, you know, terminate the clock, four years, this is what we didn't struggle with, but long conversations about, you know, when we, what the B1 zoning committee is, like, where's that pragmatic balance? Like, what, here's, here's what we know residents would love to see, right? How do we make that kind of sort of feasible? Now, this was the beginning of the pandemic, things have changed post-pandemic, and, and, you know, I think we have some more data on just some of the realities of commercial development.
To this 40B, that's going to be nowhere near the center of town.
Right.
Well, since the, since the B1 project, though, we do have, we have the Village at Norfolk, we have the Keeney Pond neighborhood that's now bigger, there's, I think Meeting House was already there at the time.
That's not like the density you need, though, to drive commercial downtown?
Well, it's.
So that's why we were trying to be like, hey, commercial on the bottom, residential up top, capped at the three floors, there are three stories.
Well, you need more, for sure, but there's already more around here, is what I'm saying, that's already very dense.
And, and we, we identified, now I'm going back in the memory banks, right, so I might not have this completely correct, and Gary, you might remember some of this, or Chad, you might remember it too, but we talked about something like the, you know, the upper lot, the stop-and-shop lot, like, if we could have that be a 40R overlay and get a developer involved and make that the core residential, and then drive things, but that, that would have required, what, you shaking your head? Yeah, you're doing this.
Oh, sorry.
You don't like me, you don't like what I'm saying. But, you know, like, that required a bunch of after steps, like, post-B1, and we were talking economic development committee, and like, select board was going to drive some sort of liaison group that would work with landowners, we just, you know, there's a million other competing things that need our focus, but we never got there.
Well, and some of the, the work that they've done are built into this already, they have interviewed landowners and developers, so that.
There's going to be a biased story there, I just don't want to give it away, but they're, they're going to have a biased story as to what they want to see. I, I do appreciate the feedback, but you also have to take it with a grain of salt.
No, no, I, I do appreciate that, I think it's kind of figuring out a grounded reality of what is a real expectation, I think. Because what people want to see is driven by private investment, so.
But even then, we can sit here and have this conversation all we want, nobody's building anything without a place to put their shit. We need sewer.
Infrastructure, yeah.
We need the infrastructure.
And you were, like, you were.
I was being literal, absolutely.
Gotcha, I agree, I agree, that's definitely.
So what's, so what else do you need to show us on this for, as a preview?
Nothing else.
Oh, okay, this, this was the main.
There's going to be a little zander with YouTube video.
It's eye-opening, it's.
It's eye-opening, yeah.
It is eye-opening.
The purpose is just to kind of give you a preview and then engage more.
So MAPC is going to be here in March, they're going to have some, they're going to go through these slides, and they're going to have some finance.
And talk through some of the questions you have, and get your feedback.
Can we punt that to a special meeting?
Sure.
And then just do that Zoom only, anybody else feeling that? That way, we're not killing ourselves that one night.
I like that, but my vote doesn't come.
But your opinion matters. I, I, what, what Gary's mentioned earlier, I, I like the, like, I would love to see, if possible, if fourth story changes this math drastically.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It also changes the poop, the shit.
Yeah.
Let's, it does, it changes the quantity.
I have more sensors on NCTV.
All right, yeah, we got to peep that out. So what would, yeah, I think, I think, I think that suggestion is a great suggestion, I didn't want to start there, but.
Yeah, let's look at dates.
Can we do it by Zoom?
Yeah, yeah, Zoom only.
Yeah.
When does the, when does the remote meeting thing, state remote meeting?
Does it expire again?
Expire?
Uh, March, March 31st.
They'll, they'll extend it.
I mean, it's, the bill's been.
Yeah.
To extend it, but.
But like, we used to meet MAPC in person, we did a field trip, like, those were the days, can we get back to that? Remember, we were all on a bus?
There was a bus.
We drove around town.
Yes.
So what would, uh. What would you, what would be your thought in terms of a date?
18? A week after? Fourth? A week before?
They'd probably prefer a week later, just to have, well.
Whatever works.
Which one?
Not St. Patty's Day.
18th, did you say?
18th?
The day after St. Patty's Day.
Yeah, let's do the 18th.
It might still be in rough shape.
I just checked my busy calendar, I'm available the next five years.
And when's Tom, when's Tom meeting?
Pick a day.
March, I don't know, I'm sorry, May 14th.
May 14th, yeah.
A little late. I mean, I think the takeaway from all this is that the, I think, I'll state the obvious, right, but some things would not be ready for May town meeting.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, I think it's important to state the obvious, but.
Yeah.
Continue to work.
I don't want to lose momentum that we have.
No, no, I know, you're not stopping work, but I mean, to think.
To put changes in place, you're saying, to support growth in the center of town? When does it need to be, when do you need to have language, ship sailed?
And the war encloses February 17th, and you can get placeholders, but the thing is, you got to work the language through, it's got to go through the review process.
Yeah, we're not getting anything from this.
And then you got to be able to defend the changes and.
Yeah, I don't, right.
So we're looking at the March 18th.
March 18th.
At 7:00.
Zoom. Zoom only.
Yep, sure.
Maybe next Tuesday.
7 o'clock. And then while we're talking calendars, I brought this up previously, I can't join the 5/13 meeting.
Okay.
I'm fine with being the only one that doesn't join.
We are too.
All right, perfect.
Wow.
One less meeting.
It's getting late, sorry.
Sully's getting sully.
That's fine, well, you can, so we'll just, yeah, postpone reorg.
Send you to the VHS.
Oh, do we have to do it on the 13th meeting?
Usually, yeah.
Usually the meeting.
Usually you do it, because the elections would be the week prior.
Yeah, but you could, if you wanted, you'll be here for the next day, right? Or, no, not for the 14th? Are you here for the 14th?
What's on the 14th?
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'd be there for the, I, yes, I believe I will be there for the, yes.
So I mean.
So we could do it.
You could mean for town meeting.
Yeah, we could do it prior to town meeting.
Yeah, okay. And then. Nomination papers are.
On a seven?
I pulled mine.
Oh, you're up?
Yeah.
I'll sign for you.
I should have brought them.
Yeah, who else is up?
After.
So you guys know what I'm going to do to get my.
By yourself, what are you doing?
I'm just going to give a sheet to Melissa like I did.
I'm going to have.
Talk to you later.
All right, we'll talk about it later. All right, what, are there any other dates, adjustments?
No, I think that's.
Make a motion to go home?
Yeah.
Gary's going to get home before midnight.
Any other new, any other unanticipated new business?
No.
Hearing none, like, to make a motion to adjourn.
So move second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all is opposed.